Folks, we're gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna give you just a couple of seconds to get in place. So I'm gonna get my notes in front of me, thank you. So, set that aside for the moment, thank you all. So this is the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm gonna do about three quick preliminary matters before we start. The first is that, this is being recorded by, I don't know who, CCTV or somebody. And that means that we need to use microphones, everybody needs to use microphones, please. And by the way, you can't hear, I can guarantee you, you can't hear in this room without a microphone. It's just impossible, you may think we can hear you, we can't hear you. So, that's the first order of business. Second thing is, just as in all of our meetings, it's really important for the record and everything else, when you are identified, that you give us your name and your address. Just to make sure that works. Third is that when we get to public comment during the public hearings, that you need to address questions to the Chair, as opposed to, for example, to the applicant. And we reserve the right to hold questions, you know, accumulate three or four or five questions before asking the applicant to respond to any of them, just for sort of good order. We, and I think with all that, we will work out just fine. We have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, eight odd hearings tonight. Hopefully, it's really the gambit, to be honest, from all the way from hearing number one, which is a renewal of a special permit to operate for a home office business, which is being renewed for what will go on to years 20 to 25, or something like that, Richard? I'm not sure what, which that is. To, so the most routine things that we do to the planned residential development at 1440 Main Street. Just so you know, we do not have, in our possession tonight, sufficient information to be able to make a final decision with respect to the 1440 Main Street PRD. We will have, what I'm sure is an open and robust public hearing about that. But we don't have a formal recommendation from the Natural Resources Commission. We just received, less than 48 hours ago, the formal recommendation of the Planning Board. We haven't heard any comments about that, so the likelihood of us being able to reach a decision on that night, tonight, is actually zero, there is really no chance, just so people know. And as a consequence, we're almost assuredly not going to go until 3:00 in the morning debating that issue. Particularly since this is my last night as Chair, so I really don't intend to be Chair on January 10th anymore. So with that, and no further ado, the first item here is Richard Warren for the renewal of a special permit under Sections 5.3.6.2 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for special home occupation to operate a construction business at 25 Upland Road, parcel number 2736. Do we have, so I see Mr. Warren in the back, would you like to make a presentation? Okay, you're gonna go on the written record. So what we have on the written record is that Mr. Warren has occupied this business for the last 18, 20 years, something like that? Since 2000, thank you, 20 years. Permit is being asked for, for a special permit for five additional years, I'm assuming. And the building commissioner is going to either nod or somehow affirmatively tell me that there's been no complaints in all of the years of operation. I am going to...
I blame regularly about calling to the office.
All right, okay, Mr. Warren, you've now violated both rules. You haven't used a microphone and you haven't identified yourself in your place of residence. So we're just gonna ignore that comment. Is there, before I open the public hearing for comment, is there any questions or thoughts from the Board? Okay, hearing none, any public comment whatsoever, the hearing is open. Mr. Dane.
Mr. Warren did not ask me to...
Whoop, yep, and you need to tell us who you are, Mr. Dane.
Yes, thank you, Everett Dane, 25 Everett Street. As I said, Mr. Warren did not ask me to come here tonight, as we have. This is a surprise to him, I hope I don't hard his effort, but I would like to say what a wonderful and charitable gentleman he is. I've been director and president of the Rotary Club for many years. And Richard Warren has fed the hungry, he has helped us with trucking food monthly, from daily round to the table. He's helped us regularly with the homeless shelter, he's involved in Chris collage. He ran and he grown in the Rife Hunger and he helped us with the Jazz Festival, which generated this year about $4,000, which we donate to the middle school music park at the 15th next week. And I just want the Board to know that he is a standing charge of charity, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dane, I'm gonna just ask a point of order here, if anyone could have actually heard Mr. Dane. I don't think that microphone is working. I did hear you, this time amazingly enough, but I don't know that that mic is on. So, so I don't know, I don't think so. So, so it was a great comment. Anybody else like to speak, either for or against this particular motion? So while they're fixing the microphone, I'm gonna close the public hearing, ask for any comments for the Board, or even suggest there might be a motion.
Do we wanna just make this longer than five years, I guess?
Would we like to make this longer than five years, given that it's been 20?
I am very happy to do that.
Great.
So you wanna make the motion?
I would like to move that we approve the application by Richard Warren for the renewal of a special permit under Section 2, 5.3.6.2 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for special home occupation to operate a construction business at 25 Upland Road, parcel number 22736, let's say for a period of 10 years.
Perfect. Okay, further discussion, all is in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Warren. That one worked, good, thank you, Mr. Dane. All right, the next, good presentation, Richard. The next, let that be a lesson to us all. The next matter we have is the CD Associated Builders to amend the special permit under Section 10 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to allow for the conversion of an existing deck into a screen porch at 66 Wayside Road. Some of you may wonder why it takes the Zoning Board of Appeals to convert a deck into a screen porch, and it turns out that 66 Wayside, or 66 Wayside Road is part of a planned residential development, and so here we are. Do we have somebody to speak for the applicant? And let's see if that mic is actually working.
Hello? Good?
Are you hearing it back there?
I don't think it's...
Yep?
Yep.
Okay.
David Guiney, CD Associated Builders. We're proposing to do this...
I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Guiney.
Guiney?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Guiney. Okay, go ahead.
We're just proposing to put a 12-by-16 approximate screen porch on an existing deck. We're not doing anything to the existing deck, just putting a roof on it.
Okay, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, any questions from the Board?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Mr. Guiney, I'm sorry, Mr. Dane isn't here to tell us what an upstanding person you are. We won't put that in the minutes. Any other comment? Close the public hearing? Questions, comments from the Board and/or motion?
I move that we approve the application by CD Associated Builders, Inc. to amend the special permit under Sections 10 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to allow for the conversion of an existing deck into a screen porch at 66 Wayside Road, parcel number 0069-3-66. Any standard conditions or anything I need to say? No?
Nope.
Great, end of sentence.
Okay, all is in favor? Aye. All right, opposed na, opposed none. Thank you very much, Mr. Guiney, and good luck with your screen porch. I'm pretty sure we're not gonna get this, next one isn't gonna take quite that period of time, but we'll give it a shot. So, next matter, it's 7:25, yes. The trustees of the Old Mans for a special permit under Sections 4.3.1, 4.3.4, 5.4.5 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to hold large outdoor events for over 50 people at 269 Monument Street, also known as the Old Mans. And I believe, just before you start, sir, that we're talking about three such events in the next year, is that correct?
Six.
Six, okay, so I misread what I, or misremembered what I had in my number. So can you, go ahead.
So I'm Michael Busak, I'm Director of the Old Mans for the trustees.
So you need to move that up, there you go.
Michael Busak, I'm Director of the Old Mans for the trustees.
I'm sorry, I still didn't get your last name.
Busak, it's B-U-S-A-K.
Yep.
So, we previously had both of our special permits attached in one in the previous year, for events 50 and under and 50 and over. This year, after lots of public comment for the previous year, we've separated those out, so last month, we were approved for all of our events under 50 for educational purposes, and this is the separate for the six events that we have annually that would exceed 50 people.
Okay, thank you. We have, I'm, all read it, I've read it, notwithstanding not remembering that it was 6, 3, not 6, or 6, not 2, but in any event. Questions or comments from the Board before I open this up to a public hearing? Okay, thank you very much. So, prepared for comments, questions, et cetera, et cetera, from the audience? Any of those in attendance? Okay, yep, you certainly can, but you unfortunately have to come to the microphone and identify your name and address, Mr. Kais.
I'm Jonathan Kais, I live at 91 Liberty Street. I've been involved with support, with local support for the Old Mans for years, and we feel what's being done is very reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Kais. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Nancy Nelson, 1695 Lowell Road, a member of the Concord Historical Commission, but I'm speaking for myself tonight.
Ms. Nelson.
I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the trustees and the Old Mans staff in particular for some of the reconsideration of the very large events that grew in ways that were not initially anticipated over the years. And I would like to remind everybody who might not know that one of the unique things about the Old Mans is that it's located within the National Park. And the town retains ownership of some of the resources that are directly adjacent to the Old Mans property. The National Park is a commemorative National Park, it is a battlefield, and we will encourage everybody to remain vigilant in terms of what kinds of events and activities go on there in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, sorry.
Many thanks, many thanks to the staff.
Sorry about cutting you off, thank you, Ms. Nelson. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Nancy Frisella Lee of 148 Walden Street. And I too have been working on a support group for the Old Mans community.
Thank, yep, right there, right there, yep.
For the Old Mans, and... We have been looking at the map that I think is submitted, that you have in your, alongside. And just for, just for consistency's sake, I'd like to address three issues, because we want that...
Excuse, sorry, ma'am, I don't know what's happening, but we're, it's like we're... All right, so what I've been told is that we have two meetings going on here, one in the Selectmen's Room and one here, and that earlier, their, our meeting was being broadcast into there, and now their meeting seems to be broadcast into here, although maybe it's stopped? Has it stopped? Has it stopped? I'm sure...
So I start talking, start...
No, yeah, give it a shot. You want, Ms. Frisella, it's Friselli?
Ms. Frisella, Mrs. Frisella Lee.
Frisella, okay, Ms. Frisella, yeah, why don't you give it a shot, and we'll see if it works.
So, as I was saying, I've been working with a working support group for the Old Mans, and one of our members couldn't be here, and I know she's been talking to Michael and Elizabeth about amendment, wording amendments to the map that you have. And it's just, we wanna be consistent, because this is a historic site, and we don't, there's been turnover of staff at the Old Mans, and you've, this is the second permitting this year, and we know that they'll come back next year, so we thought that we better just, for the record, get the wording straight. And you almost need a magnifying glass to look at the map. But where the garden is, it says re...
What they do.
I have my...
She did something over there.
Resized garden, the trustees have, were very excited that they're going to put the garden back to its enlarged form. And so where on the map it says lawn, it's actually not a lawn, that's incorrect terminology. It should say garden area, because historically, that's the accurate phrase, or the, what it was, the garden area. And then to the left of where it says stone foundation, in that area behind there, between there and the boathouse, there's an orchard, and historically, there was an orchard there, but it's re, been re-put back, and it's, we call it now the commemorative orchard, and we hope that that's going to stay, because that's the historical landscape. And then on the other side, to the north, on the north side of the map, where it says lawn and meadow, that's what Nancy Nelson was discussing, that we always want to remember that that actually was part of the battle from the Revolution, the Battle of the Old North Bridge, so it shouldn't be called lawn or meadow, that should, historically, it is the battlefield. And we really like the map to reflect that. So it just should say simply battlefield. Sometimes we've, we've said that it's the north field, but it's really more accurate that it's the battlefield.
Okay, thank you. So, just to make sure that I understand this, and maybe others. So there's, really, you're suggesting a couple of things. One is you're suggesting general support for the petition. And the second is, is that you'd like the Mans to agree to certain alterations on the map. One place where it says lawn, it should say garden. One place where it says orchard, it should say commemorative, or something should say commemorative orchard. Another place where it says lawn, it should say battlefield.
Right.
Right?
And one of our concerns is that we've gone back and forth, a lot of discussion has been on the issue of parking and what is labeled on the map, the overflow area. And Lot A on the map is where the, you know, the new, newish, or the parking lot for modern cars. And beyond that, where it's called the overflow, sometimes it's said in the wording on the permit, it describes it as an emergency parking area, and it's not really, we want it to be accurate, because we're really keen that these events, which have grown over the years, stay to a size that's manageable for the property and respectful to the use of the property. And so that overflow area, we really are keen, and the trustees have been agreeing with us, that they, we want to use that only occasionally, when parking is really an issue. And so we don't want it to say parking on the lawn, because it, we want to be mindful that it was a battlefield. And so, you know, they've agreed that they would limit the number of times that it's used, and it's only in an occasional, we like the word occasional rather than emergency. And we just want that to be consistent, because next year, this will come back, this issue when they, when they reapply for the next year's permit. And we also want to just say, we're really thankful that, you know, grateful to the trustees, and we really like the fact that these permits are only one year at a time now, because, rather than three years, because these events over the last few years have been growing, and very rapidly. And that's something that we're all, we want to be watchful of, because we don't want the, you know, too many people to be overusing the site.
Great, thank you, Ms. Friselli. So, Mr. Busak, right? So, have you had enough discussions to think that you can either have an opinion about this or make these changes, or where are we?
Yes, so we're in totally support of the language ages on the map. And just to add on to the overflow parking area, which is...
We can't see it anyway. Okay.
Okay. So, the overflow area, we're willing to call that an emergency or whatever we think is appropriate, but we're also willing to put in the narrative to be used less than five times during the calendar year.
Or sparingly, or something, yeah, okay.
We avoid using it personally, but if an emergency.
All right, so I'm gonna ask the Town Planner if we have some latitude here, given the general agreement, that we could leave to you and as part of our motion, the double-checking to make sure that it's consistent and everyone has got the words down in the right place? Is that, okay, we can do that? Great, is that okay with you, mister?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, great. Mr. Perry, back there?
Good evening, Ned Perry, 362 Bedford Street.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
I'm part of the local group that's been working with the trustees over the last three years, and we very much appreciate Michael's listening to the local group and working with the local group. One of the six events before you tonight in the special permit is the winter solstice program, which this year, unfortunately, I think even Michael would admit was a difficult program to handle with parking up and down Monument Street, which was illegal. And Michael did his best to control the parking around the Old Mans. But I would have the Board look at this permit and if there's a way of encouraging the National Park Service, the trustees of reservations, and the Concord Police Department to work on at least the major, these major six events, which sometimes overrun the property and overrun the area. This year, the tough rock program is gonna be only passing through, rather than starting and stopping, which has been a major problem for the Old Mans. And the trustees have worked with the organization to move it elsewhere. So we think it's only gonna be passing through, so it's not actually one of the six on your chart. But the winter solstice remains a problem, and I would just encourage the Board to have staff work with the building inspector and the town to make sure that they work with the trustees and try and make sure the parking doesn't get as bad as it was in the winter solstice this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Just one second, just, anybody else here for the moment? Yes, sir? Just collecting.
BJ Dunn, Superintendent of Minuteman National Historical Park. Just with a reference to the winter solstice event, the park permitted Umbrella Center for the Arts for the winter solstice event held at the Old Mans. The park has recognized the problem that happened this past solstice, and we've already met with the Old Mans and Umbrella, and have worked out new arrangements for following years. There was a variety of unforeseen circumstances that led to extremely, it became a very popular event this year. It has not been in past years, but we've already addressed and come up with new alternatives for shuttle parking for future years. The Park Service supports the permit application by the trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Dunn. Anyone else? And I suspect that was something you were about to say, right? Was that you were, yes, okay, what he said. All right, so unless there's anything further, I think we can probably close the public hearing? Yes, no? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Comments, thoughts from the Board?
Well, I have a comment, which is why this is our problem to solve.
I know, and you have to tap the thing.
My comment is, I wonder why this is our problem to solve?
Hmm, I don't know that it's our problem to solve. Our problem may be, I think what Mr. Perry was asking was that the Board asked staff if they would send a letter to the appropriate people, probably the Town Manager, on behalf of the Board, recognizing that, now having heard Superintendent Dunn, recognizing that this was a problem this year, that we understand that the Mans and the Park Service have already tried to come up with an alternative, and that we would just ask the Town Manager's office to, you know, connect as early as possible with the Mans and the National Park to make sure that, to see if we can alleviate the problem in the future. There's nothing we can do other than that, I don't think, in this particular case, other than not give the permit. But I don't think anyone here is saying we shouldn't give the permit. I think they're saying that we had to look at this issue. It's my view.
It's a question for Ms. Hughes. I know this is not a renewal, it's a new permit, but is the expectation...
I know this is not a renewal, it's a new permit, but is the expectation that some of the conditions that were with the previous permit would be ported over to this as well?
Yes. There's definitely the expectation that the, that the conditions of the previous permit and also the conditions that the Board implemented this past winter for even the smaller events, some of those conditions are applicable as well, dealing with coordination with, you know, different entities. I don't have it in front of me, so I can't, as far as those previous conditions. But the building commissioner is awesome, so... No, not this one, not the one from 19...
Not that awesome, apparently.
Sorry. So, yes, so it would include those same types of conditions.
Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, now we have it, good.
So, those deals with the, you know, the overflow parking, no more than 200 people shall be on the site at any one time for winter solstice celebration. And the condition regarding building facilities not being used for special events, requirement for restrooms, coordination with the police department.
Right.
So, all of those, all of those other conditions would be incorporated. My recommendation...
You're okay with that? Yes?
I am, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, what I'm hearing here is a sort of a, we need a motion that probably incorporates a few things. One is reference to the agreement that's been reached but needs to be implemented with respect to the map names, and particularly the emphasis on the emergency or whatever we're going to haul as parking. Secondly, that we're going to incorporate these various conditions from the previous permits that were just read, will be incorporated in here. And then third, that notwithstanding the wonderful fact that everyone's already coordinated on the winter solstice, that we'll ask the town planner if she would be able to just send a note to the town manager on our behalf to just alert people that that was an issue this year, and we need some coordination for next year as well.
So, the inclusion of the condition, use of the emergency parking area less than five times a year, and then, prior to the commencement of any event, the applicant shall submit to the town planner for review and approval, a revised site plan, amending the labels on the plan for the lawn, meadow, orchard, and overflow parking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special permit for the Old Mans on the sections 431, 434, 545, and 11-6 of the zoning bylaw to hold large outdoor events for people, for over 50 people at 269 Monument Street, parcel 1267, with the conditions as just mentioned by the chair.
Supplemented by the town planner.
Supplemented by the town planner.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. I'm so glad to hear all of the cooperation that has gone into this. I really commend all of you. This is really terrific. It's a wonderful asset for the town and something that, and the community. And it's great to see everyone working together. Okay, next. Charles Audi, to amend a special permit under section 7.7.3.4, 7.7.3.13, 11.6, and 11.8 of the zoning bylaw for relief from a parking design standards at 143 Sudbury Road, which is sometimes known as the mobile station. And one of the things I just want to point out is that we have received a recommendation from the planning board, which is required under the zoning bylaw in a situation like this, that it first be reviewed by the planning board and recommended to us. Go.
Hi. Paul Mahoney from Mahoney Architects. I'm here with Charlie Audi. I worked with Charlie on his initial special permit, and I'm helping him with this amendment. I think the planner's report summarizes the project very succinctly. Just to give you a simple recap, the application is a request to reconfigure stacked parking from a total of eight spaces to now be 15 spaces. It's attendant parking, so there is an employee who moves the vehicles in and out of this area. And it's useful for Charlie and the way his business operates because of its location near to the train. Many of his customers come on their way to work, they leave their car, they have it worked on during the day, they come back at the end of the day and pick up their car, which is a little different than some service stations where people might be more inclined to pick them up within an hour or two. So, that's the reason for the need for the additional stacked parking.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Questions from the board? Yes?
I actually do, and it's actually almost a more question to the board. So, my opinion is, after looking at this, that the parking plan as it is presented to us doesn't comply with ADA requirements or MAAB requirements. So, it's not compliant with federal and state regulations. You know, and I have some papers for you, and I can read through them. But, you know, you need, in short, you need to have a van accessible space closest to the door, and it's, you know, certain dimensions, certain grades across that. So, I'm not, you know, I think we have a plan that doesn't meet federal and state standards, and I'm not sure whether we can act on that.
All right. Well, that's, that's an interesting twist to this. Thank you very much for that research. Other questions, comments from the board, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Mahoney for a comment.
I'm just curious, I mean...
We've got to talk on the microphone, sorry.
I'm just curious, it seemed to me that, I mean, if it was going to be people parking their cars in this place, I would think it would be ridiculous. But if they're going to, they're going to have somebody, they're going to have somebody actually doing the parking for the people, I'm not as upset about it.
So, yeah, so I guess the question is, is are you talking about the entire site plan that's there?
Correct. Let me just read this here. When a business, state, or local government agency, or other covered entity restripes a parking lot, it must provide accessible parking spaces as required by the ADA standards for accessible design. Failure to do so would violate the ADA. No, and then, you know, there is just, there is, indeed, there are some regulations that you need to have, you know, at least one accessible space that needs to have an eighth wide aisle that can't be combined with a drive aisle. And it needs to be the space closest to the door, or, you know, and it's, you know, not...
Right.
You know, and then, it's a regulation that, you know, as a site planner, I deal with on a daily basis. So, I, yeah.
No, I hear you.
In my professional opinion, it just doesn't, doesn't meet code.
So, we weren't really looking at that with this application. I appreciate, you know, your analysis of it. When we made this application in 2012, we have a space that hasn't changed from that time, which is at this location. And that was approved at that time.
That location.
So, we really weren't looking at that at this juncture. We were just focusing on the area that was already established as the attendant parking spaces.
Can you show me again where you just pointed?
Yep, that's right here.
Yeah. And understood. That plan that you provided a few years ago didn't meet code either. And as I just said, the moment you're restriping it, you will have to just beef it up and come up to code.
All right. Well, I'm going to turn to our, to our ACE Building Commissioner here at the moment, see what he has to say.
Well, so right now, there is one handicap parking spot. It's, we went out and measured it's, it's...
Oh, my God, this is...
Handicap parking spot right here is 65 feet from the front door. We measured it this week. The closest parking spot would be stacked parking. Otherwise, if you go over to the left of the building, that one is 51 feet. But the one to the left of the building, you have two service spaces right there, where people come, cars coming in and out. If you'd like, I can call the Architectural Access Board and talk to William Joyce, he's the compliance officer, send him this plan, and see what he thinks. And, I mean, the one that's 65 feet away, he might agree to, he might ask him to move it, but...
And he might, he might ask you to come in and apply for a variance. I mean, the space itself, by the way, it needs an eight-foot wide access aisle anyways. So, it's only five that's drawn there.
That doesn't have the hash marks out there on the site?
Do you know if this space here, do you know if it has these hash marks right there?
Yes, that is...
All right. So, hang on, go ahead.
The only other thing I'll point out is that the stacked parking is not striped. I mean, they're not going to be restriping it to show 15 spaces. It was used as stacked parking for, for eight. They, but they're not, they're not striped. So, I mean, they're not, there isn't going to be any change in the striping.
So, this, Mr. Mahoney, this, this one, I mean, I appreciate, I don't think anybody in the board fails to appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here. We're going to make sure that we hear from the whole public and make sure there's nobody who's concerned about that, that we haven't heard the attention.
Yes.
So, but, so I just want to, so I'm still hoping that public hearing for that, but I just want to think about how we might be able to get ourselves to a point where we can deal with this.
Because it's parking, but not really parking, is what you're, I think, saying by striping. But is there, are there any provisions for that kind of thing, like valet parking, for example? How does that work with the ADA? It's essentially what this is? You know, you're storing these cars, or in a weird way, not being parked, so it's not, people aren't coming in and out of them?
Yeah. I assume this is essentially valet parking, is what's proposed.
I think, I think the, I'm guessing that maybe the issue that they're raising is that it, if you're going to redo something on the lot, then the whole thing has to still have to be compliant again. So, even if the thing you're doing isn't that, it's still you get the question of the compliance.
Well, you're, you read that it was, if it was restriped, it needed to be, right? And you're saying it's...
It's maybe not going to be restriped.
Yeah. That's the language, though, that you read, correct, yeah?
Yeah.
All right. So, let me, we're going to have to deal with this issue, but I just want to make sure that what we're dealing with is an issue of a regulation, and there's not anyone who's come to this hearing to be with a concern, one way or the other, about the actual parking plan aside from the ADA matter. So, I'm going to open the public hearing, just ask if there's anybody who would like to speak for or against this, and then we're going to try to sort out this issue. Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Now, seems to me the question comes down to whether or not, is a, potentially a technical one, of which I'm just concerned about whether we have an ability to decide it tonight. So, I don't know if you have the ability to hold off for a month and get it sorted out with the town staff, or what's possible. Mr. Mahoney, you might speak today.
I think that's a practical approach to, you know, wait a month and have further discussion and just make sure we've, we're all comfortable with the solution.
Is that acceptable to you all?
Yes.
Okay. So, with your permission, we're going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until February something. Somebody's going to tell me, Heather? February something?
13th.
February 13th.
February 13th, you'll be the first, or maybe the first person on the list. Okay, February 13th at 7:15. Can I get a motion?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. I move that we continue this hearing until February 13th at 7:15 p.m.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Audi, sorry about that. We always try to get them, get it done if we can, but just didn't work out.
No problem. Got to get it right.
Okay, next. Hello. Next, we have Thomas and Susan Miller for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 2,266 square foot addition on a 1,886 square foot dwelling unit that will increase the gross floor area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 56 Coburn Hill Road. And just to clarify for everybody, we have two bylaws that we deal with in this area. One of them is the so-called anti-mansionization bylaw, which is not implicated here. That goes for floor area ratio compared to the size of the house compared to the lot. This house fully complies within that bylaw, so it's doesn't implicated. The second is if you happen to be on a non-conforming lot, then you can't increase the size of your home by more than 50% of the so-called gross floor area without a special permit of this board. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. My name is Elise Stone, and I'm the architect for the Millers. Susan Miller is here with me today. So, the Millers have lived in Concord for over 20 years, and they're selling their current house. And they bought this house on Coburn Hill last year. The original house, it's a Cape house. It was built in 1953. It has a two-car detached garage that was built in 1980. So, so the house, the current house conforms to all the setbacks. The current lot in Residence B conforms to the size. The requirement is 20,000, and they have 22,000 square foot lot. So, where it's non-conforming is the frontage. The requirement for Residence B is 125 feet, and this house only has 100 feet for the frontage. So, that's why we're in front of you today. So, the, the existing house has 1,886 square feet, and that's including the two-car garage. So, 50% is the 943, as you mentioned. And so, the new square footage by right is 28, 29, 100 square feet. So, the proposed house that we're, that we're asking for is a total with the garage in the house is 4,152. And that is 3,521 of living space and a 631 square foot garage. So, just a couple of things, maybe we could look at the elevations, Elizabeth. We're not proposing, we're not tearing the house down. We are keeping the house as a Cape. We are not going higher than the existing house. So, on the front, we've removed the detached garage. We're pulling it forward and attaching it to the house. But we're keeping the general box of the house. We're adding a portico, and we've added a dormer on the front of the house. The, most of the addition, I would say, is towards the back. So, the massing on the front doesn't change significantly because there is currently a two-car garage. And I'm not sure I could use that.
Yeah, we're, I mean, for the, for the public, we're looking at here.
Okay. Yeah. So, from the front and the side. So, most of the addition you see is to the back. There is this green porch on the left side on the back, garage. And we feel that the 3,521 in the house also includes, Tom has an at-home office, so over the garage is really a dedicated office space for him with a separate staircase. So, Susan has gone around to the neighbors, and I'd like to include this in the record. She got the signature from, you know, many of their neighbors on Coburn Hill, and has shown them the project. Do you have any, any questions?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Ms. Stone. Any questions from the board before we open the public hearing?
Yeah. Go ahead, Robbie.
Do we know how many of the lots around it are non-conforming?
There's quite a few, actually, that are. I sat with Ray, and we looked at it. This neighborhood, a lot of them do have the 100, you know, the 100-foot frontage. So, which would be great in Residence C, but obviously in Residence B, it's 125. So, there are actually quite a few along there that are non-conforming. I did pull a bunch of cards from the neighborhood on Nimrod and Coburn Hill, and at least five had higher than the square footage that have been added over the years. So, I, we didn't feel as if, although it sounds a lot, the 41, and it sounds like a big increase, those original caves were fairly small, and that this is not really out of scale or scope with what the neighborhood has, has been developing, and the less. Yeah, so you can see all the... Yeah, so you can see all the frontages there, the yellow is the, oh, I guess you can't see it.
Those are all the non-conforming.
So on this map, all of the parcels in orange are non-conforming to frontage.
There's a lot, but there's also a lot of houses that have been built, there's a lot of new houses there, right, in that road?
I mean, relatively.
Wrong word, there's a lot of houses that have been up-sized.
Yes, yes, it's a neighborhood that had originally, I think, been similar to the Southfield Riverdale neighborhood, that, you know, if you see now from 10 years ago, is completely changed.
Great, let's, up for the due, let's open up the public hearing, see if we have comment. Yes, ma'am, I see somebody approaching.
Jane Torpey, 55 Coburn Hill Road, directly across the street.
Right, just a little closer, Ms. Torpey.
Better, Jane Torpey.
Thank you.
55 Coburn Hill Road, directly across the street. I've lived in my house for 25 years, I'm the homeowner, and I appreciate Ms. Smith coming over to my house to show me the plans, and I appreciate that the existing roofline and width of the house are not changing. I thought about this overnight, and I realized that the height of the garage is changing substantially to accommodate the office, there never used to be an office above the garage. And the garage in the original residence was somewhat subordinate to the house itself. In the new elevation, the garage does not look very subordinate to the house. It's also been pulled closer to the front of the lot, and my house is directly across the street from this, so I get a pretty good view. I was wondering if the board would consider asking the applicant to consider pulling the front of the garage back to where the current front of the garage is. I understand that it would be difficult to drop the height of the garage because it is needed for an office, and that's why I'm making the request I'm making. I'm not an architect, but from my viewing of the plans, it looks like it might be possible to pull the garage back and still maintain the connection to the house.
Thank you, Ms. Torpey. Before you answer, I'm just going to ask if there's any other comments? Okay, Ms. Stone?
Hi, you know, I appreciate the comment. The problem is, the garage, if it was put back to where it was, it could not be connected to the house, it would be connected to the screen porch in the back, and there would, it just could not be connected. So you wouldn't be coming from the house into the mudroom, into the living space. It would have to remain a detached garage, and that's really not the goal for the Millers. They would like an attached garage, so...
Thank you. Further comments, you can, certainly can.
Thank you, it's my first time speaking at one of these meetings, so I'm learning the protocol.
Second now.
Okay, it's getting better. I'm wondering if it is possible to move the garage back any distance from the proposed current sighting and still maintain a connection to the house?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stone?
From a design perspective, I mean, anything is possible, however, it, you know, moving it back two or three feet would be, it wouldn't make any difference at all in terms of the visual appearance from the front, and believe it or not, like pushing that screen porch back, I mean, it actually has a further, you know, kind of a more bulky effect in the back. I mean, it just, you would have to push it all the way back to where it is for you, really, to have a significant difference, and then their screen porch would be blocked. So, one thing affects the other.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Thank you, Ms. Torpey. Further comments, questions, thoughts? I'm going to close the public hearing, we often, sometimes we end up in a site visit, in which case we'll probably open the public hearing back again, but at least I'm going to, before I close the public hearing, let me just turn to the board, see if there's any thoughts, concerns, comments, Theo.
I thought you were pushing.
Well, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to a site visit, given the issue that has been raised.
Never opposed to a site visit. It's cold, why not? Go ahead.
You know, if there's a site visit, then that's fine, I'm not sure, firstly, I don't need one, but I'm happy to go.
I never think it hurts to go on a site visit, I think we're not hearing a lot of comments against this, so, but, I would say no harm.
Well, we have a number of non-conforming lots in the neighborhood, you know, whatever we do here will have an effect of whatever happens in others of these, and I think making sure that we're comfortable that it meets the character of the neighborhood is always helpful. Is the applicant willing to let us schedule a site visit and defer this, a final judgment on this to next meeting? Recognizing that we could always just, whatever, do. Yes, ma'am, you're Ms. Miller, you're right, Ms. Miller?
Sorry, Susan Miller, I currently live at 31 Pondview Lane.
Thank you.
I'm, of course, willing for you to come for a site visit. Timing is becoming an issue, we have to be out of the house we're in now by July 1st, and I hadn't expected this delay, as it was for the non-conforming lot, we hadn't understood that to be the case. I think we've made every effort to try to make the house so that it doesn't stick out in the neighborhood, so that it's, you know, by not taking it down, by keeping it a Cape, by trying to minimize the scale of it. But, you know, of course, I'm willing for you to go for a site visit, I just know it involves a delay, an additional delay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. I'm just going to ask Ms. Torpey to, I think the, I think the board is happy to go look at this, all right? But while Ms. Stone is speaking, just think about what you've heard and whether or not that still would be something that you would like to have us see, so I'll get to you in a second. Yes, Ms. Stone?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm also asking that, you know, I've been in front of this board many times for this exact same thing, many times when we're tearing the house down in all different types of neighborhoods, and, you know, there's never been a site visit, so I'm just curious about that, you know, because I agree with Susan, you know, we have made every effort to, you know, keep this house and update it. I mean, these capes, as all those ones on, throughout Concord are in dire need of renovation, most of them, and, you know, when you're renovating, you're going to make them, you are going to make them livable to today's standards. So, you know, the issue is that it does put us at another month, and so that's...
Well, we've been making a lot of site visits lately, I think it's, there's a lot of concern about where these neighborhoods are going, so I think that it's perhaps not happened in your case, but we've actually had quite a few lately. But in any event, thank you for that, and we'll give that further consideration. Yes, Ms. Townplanner?
So, I absolutely love my administrative assistant as well, because she reminded me that with Google Maps, we can walk you down the street if you want.
I've already been down that street, we've been, we've all been down that street in a Google Map world, and I've actually driven down it. I mean, I will say that I've driven down it, we've done the Google Maps, I would say that what's being proposed here is not outside of the character of many of the homes that are now on this street. There are some smaller homes, there are homes that are going to be certainly, almost assuredly renovated in the future as they turn over and do things. There, it's, you know, I think that it's probably fair to say that the likelihood is that the board will approve this plan, but, you know, we're really trying very, very hard here in the town to try to give everybody an opportunity to think about these things, these are important issues for neighborhoods, and they're important issues for places. So, you know, we haven't made a decision yet here, but I think that we're trying to be fair to everybody who's involved, so everyone's can, you know, move on and understand that whatever decision we come to, it's one that has been well thought forward. So, in any event, Ms. Torpey, we have heard a lot, I don't know if you are interested in continuing to push this, or if you're interested in not, I mean, I'm not pressuring you one way or the other, I'm just asking a question here. You certainly may.
Okay, so now this is my third appearance. I had not been aware that there are issues of precedent being set here, and I wondered if you could help me understand what those issues might be.
Sure, I'll do it very quickly, so, and it's relevant to any of these, so as anyone ever thinks about this issue. Recognize that if a person has a conforming lot, they can put on that home, any house that meets the setback requirements and does not exceed the so-called floor area ratio, which in this particular case would be probably another 1,000, 2,000, 2,000 square feet more than the size that people are building. They could build a house that's 2,000 square feet, bigger than the one that's being proposed, on a conforming lot. Where there is a street that has mostly conforming lots, or a lot of conforming lots, the board has, in the time that I've been on it, which is a couple of three years now, sort of taken a position that houses that are proposed, that are, that happen to be on a non-conforming lot are therefore in front of us because they're a non-conforming lot, and it's only those that are on a non-conforming lot that would come before us. For those residences that are on a non-conforming lot that come before us, that we have taken a position that we think about both how the character of the neighborhood is now, and well as, as well as what the character of the neighborhood will probably look like in the future as other conforming lots come on and people do whatever they wish to do with them. So, in this particular case, so this board has had in the past, for example, a neighborhood that had virtually, every lot was non-conforming, almost every single lot, or every single lot was non-conforming, nobody had ever kind of gone outside the limits for size, and, you know, we, and there were a lot of neighbors who were saying, we want the character of this to stay in this sort of small number, and in that case, the board encouraged the developer to withdraw their application and think about this again. Other cases where there are a lot of conforming lots and/or previous decisions have been such that houses are built bigger, you know, I think that we say it's kind of within the character, and if everybody, you know, there's people sometimes don't like the house that's being built or whatever, but if it's generally within the character of the neighborhood, we think that under the board, the zoning bylaw that we're done, that we really need to support that, and part of this is the neighbors, your neighbors, who have also supported that, that's part of our thinking. My comment earlier about that ultimately I think this will probably be approved is the fact that having been down Coburn Hill Road, having looked at it again on Google Maps, there's just a number, however they got there, whether they're conforming lots that got built without any approval, whether the non-conforming lots have received special permits at some point, there are a lot of homes on the street already that are not outside, you know, are not, they're not inconsistent with the home that we understand is being put up here in terms of size, in terms of mass, in terms of other things. And so, within that kind of situation, you know, pretty much without a hue and cry, an outcry from the neighborhood, it would be unusual for the board ultimately to deny the permit, just because it sort of recognizes that that's kind of where things are going. We can all have a discussion about individuals' view about whether there should be bigger or smaller homes in the town of Concord, but that's not what's in, that's actually not what's in front of us, it's really a neighborhood-by-neighborhood character basis, and it has a lot to do with what we think could happen there, because there are, if there are a lot of conforming lots, you know, it's just going to, they're just going to be big houses if they're going to be big houses. Ms. Stone, while Ms. Torpey's thinking?
I just wanted to say, you know, you talked about precedents, I just want to say that the house next door, number 46, is also a non-conforming lot, and that house is, with the garage, is 47,092 square feet, so I feel like...
Or 4,700. 47,000 is 13,000 feet bigger than the White House.
Just to point out that there was, you know, obviously, a special permit issued at that location right next door to this proposed house.
So, anyway, I've had a lot of airtime here, and the board, it's really up to the board to decide whether it wants to ask for a site visit, to move forward, I'm looking for some direction here from the organization.
I guess what I'd like to have, to not have to have a site visit, are, is the layout with how big the houses are, we don't have that, so it's hard for me to see what we're looking at versus what the other houses are. I mean, I guess you said that one's 40-something?
Right.
But, we just don't have that information, so I guess a site visit would be useful to see what the characters like on the ground, as it were.
Right.
You know, I did pull a bunch of cards from the neighborhood of Coburn Hill, all with the square footages, you know, just in case, just to show that this house is...
I mean, that would be helpful to me, I guess it depends on what other people on the board think, if they... Thank you. So we're looking at 46, where am I looking?
Why don't you just read them off?
So 46 Coburn Hill, we're looking at 4,029. When I'm looking at these numbers, though, these are equivalent to what we're looking at for the...
Not really, no, I mean, right, no, you can't, you also can't see in here, you can't hear in here, you can't see in here, it's a great room.
I took the living space plus the garage, and I got that.
Oh, you've got the file on.
So that's kind of what we're looking at for this, is the living space plus the garage.
I mean, I guess I'd ask what other people think, it seems a little, I mean, we could do this, but, I don't know. 51, 47, 92, so looking at these...
They're big houses.
Yeah, they're big houses, right. 46, this is Nimrod, this is Nimrod.
Is the mayor or something else ringing here?
I know, is that me?
Oh.
Do you need to go? 19 Coburn and 46 Coburn, do they want to work with this?
I saw him when you...
You said you don't need a site visit.
Right, not, that doesn't mean that, you know, a site visit, more information would typically always be welcome, but I think we've, getting back to neighborhood character, the only comment that we heard about this, about the house that is maybe not liked, is the fact that the garage is a little bit too far forward. You know, I think with keeping the existing Cape, the existing house intact, et cetera, I think, you know, nobody's made a comment that the neighborhood character is, or is not being adhered to, it's, so that's also why I was, yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's pretty much my standard, so...
I buy that argument.
Okay, so, where I think we're heading for, Ms. Torpey, is probably a view that, based on all available evidence, we think... based on all available evidence, we think we probably are gonna go forward here and make a decision, but we're happy to have you have a last word.
I would be comfortable with that. I just gave you a very specific request, and that was the extent of my request.
Perfect. Well, we want to make sure everybody's heard and we're thoughtful about what there is. I mean, truly, and not everyone's gonna be happy about these things, but we absolutely want to make sure that we are considering every alternative. So, with that, I think we're not gonna ask for a site visit. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll take any further discussion.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, get close enough to the mic.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the application by Thomas and Susan Miller for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 2,266 square foot addition on a 1,886 square foot dwelling that will increase the gross floor area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 56 Coburn Hill Road, parcel number 1850, subject to standard conditions, and the plan submitted to the board.
Second. Okay, you have a motion, second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thanks, all of you. Thank you very much.
That was awful.
Hopefully, thanks for everybody on that. All right, next issue, going from one to the next. We have-
Same issue.
It's the same issue. Same, same issue, different house. Old Marlboro 182 LLC for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish an existing 1,857 square foot dwelling and construct a new 3,296 square foot dwelling that will increase the gross area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 182 Old Marlboro Road, parcel 3696. And I assume that you are here for the applicant, so you are?
Eli Constantino.
Mr. Con, do you have an address, please?
Live at 16 Cooper Farm Lane in Littleton.
Great, thank you, Mr. Constantino. Go ahead.
So, you something nicely with the house we're proposing to build at 182 Old Marlboro Road is-
Could you get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
The house is approximately 500 square feet larger than what the GFA would allow. This house includes a two-car garage, which the current building does not have. Two-car garage is about 580 square feet, and you have that garage within the GFA. The whole house is two feet wider than the existing, so not a big change there. It's, if you don't include the door, it isn't about this, it's 10 feet shorter in depth than the existing. If you include those areas, it's three feet longer. It's gonna be about nine feet taller than what's there and about nine feet below the town will allow for maximum height. Most of the lots in the neighborhood are non-conforming, there are a handful of non-conforming lots. Within 100 yards of this house, there are homes that are much larger upwards of 4,100 square feet, so we deal with this, it's in nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Constantino. Questions from the board? I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Anybody would like to speak in favor, opposed, et cetera? All in and all done, thank you very much. Close the public hearing. Could we have comment, motions, et cetera? I'll just say that, I'll make the comment that I do think that, based on our criteria, the same criteria we're talking about in the other one, neighborhood character, you know, traffic, all the things that we need to look at through here in the bylaw, that this is, I would agree with Mr. Constantino, this sort of fits into how I have perceived old Marlboro Road's character changing over the last, say, 15 years.
And, yeah, I want to add to that, that indeed, I think the, the location of the house and the existing, pretty much the existing footprint, making it a bit more compact, and really, nothing changes, well, minimal changes in width, and even the length comes a little bit shorter, that I think it's, it's, I think it's, it's, it will be fitting in nicely with the neighborhood character. So, that said, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for Old Marlboro 182 LLC under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5, 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish the existing 1,857 square foot dwelling and construct a new 3,296 square foot dwelling that will increase the gross floor area by more than 50% on a non-conforming lot at 182 Old Marlboro Road, parcel 3696.
Subject to our ordinary conditions.
Subject to-
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much, Mr. Constantino. Next.
Well, no, we're-
No, no, no. Next, we have Christopher and Monica Park for a special permit under, and then I'm now going to pause here, is this actually section 4.2.2.2? I think 4.2.2.1 is not the accessory, accessory dwelling.
There's additional dwelling.
Or the additional dwelling.
1928.
Oh, that's why? I stand corrected. So, we're 4.2.2.1 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for an additional dwelling at 215 Lexington Road, parcel 0025, which was apparently built before 1928. I've now been informed by the building commissioner, and you are, sir?
Good evening, my name is Chris Park, 215 Lexington Road.
Mr. Park.
Yeah, good evening. I'm here with my wife Monica. She and I are the current owners and caretakers of 215 Lexington Road, also known as the Sam Stables House. We purchased the home in about 2011. We undertook a fairly extensive renovation and addition project roughly from about 2013 to 2015. As part of that project, we added one dormer to our detached garage and finished the second floor of that detached garage with a half bath. We have been using that space for a number of different purposes over the past few years, workshop, storage area, whatever, and those sorts of things. In recent months, we've talked and decided that we'd like to add a shower and a kitchenette to that space in order to make it more usable as an in-law suite, a space for a graduate student returning from college, as yet deployed, something like that.
Quiet in there, there.
Some types of circumstances happening. Surely, the project, it requires no additional space, it requires no changes to the exterior of the property. As you might imagine, you've got to know your colleagues at the Historic History Commission quite well during the course of this project. Great support from them, I might add. So, really, the, the application here is to add what you see in the drawing, the existing half-bath toilet remains in its current location, we'll add a shower unit next to that, slightly larger sink and vanity, a small kitchenette directly outside. And that would be the majority of the electrical plumbing changes, lighting will remain the same. As I said, no exterior changes, et cetera. As we got to work with Ray in the apartment, we wanted to make sure we were compliant with floor area ratio in the pre-1928 date. Monica did a fair amount of research to confirm and provide some documentation that shows that detached garage was in fact built prior to 1928. For those interested, that was actually burned down and rebuilt around 1915 or so. So, really, what we're doing in the original project and now, it's compliant with that aspect of prior to 1928. We're also compliant, if I could add, with the floor area ratio increase, as we didn't know it at the time when we planted, having put a second dormer on the detached garage, we would be out of compliance with that increase. Having only put the single dormer on, the increase in floor area ratio of that second floor over the existing structure in 19, when the renovation was done in 2015, is about 17 to 18%, so we're under 25%. Have you got any questions, Nathan?
Thank you, Ms. Park. Before I open it up, any questions from the board? Ray, just, can you just bring us through this? So, it just, it seems to me that, given the fact that there's no additional exterior work being done here, that there's really, this is really a very straightforward proposal, correct?
Right. As long as he shows that the house, the garage is built prior to 1928, then it would be allowed by the special permit.
And you've seen that documentation, or you're-
Well, he's given us, Monica's done the research at the library and has given us photos of evaluation books that shows a house and a garage, I think it was in 1924, 1925.
Great, thank you very much. Further questions? I'm gonna open it up to, I think I did, did I open up, I'm opening up to public comment, in any event. You guys seem to be here for something else.
I don't know why.
Are you commenting? Yes, ma'am? No, you're just checking my microphone. Or the microphone, not mine. God forbid. All right. All in, thank you. So, we're gonna close public hearing. Further comments and/or motions? Thanks again, Ray, for your work.
I guess, Ray, we've heard that, that we've validated that the barn building or the former garage existed before 1928, but were we able to validate that the floor area of that building before 1928 was the, it's 756 square feet, or whatever the base we're using is?
We don't have any building plans in the office, so the applicant just provided us with the size of the garage barn that's there now. It's built on an old rebel stone foundation.
So, the foundation is the same, so we think the size-
And it's under the floor area ratio in any event, right? Is what I'm hearing?
Right.
Yeah, so it's, even if it was, it's not like it was over, it was over and we have to grandfather it in, it's already there.
Right, well, so, the 4-2-2-1, they're allowed to increase the size of the structure by 20%, and then the 2013 addition, he'd increased it by 14%.
Got it.
So, it's under the 20.
So, the question was, was there another increase between 1928 and 2013? But I think it's probably a-
Not in our records at the office, so we don't have permits go back to 1930s, 1920s.
Okay. It'd be nice if we did, but in the absence of it, I don't have a concern.
All right, 'til the mind of man runneth not to the contrary. Okay. Motions? Comments?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the application of Christopher and Monica Park for a special permit under sections 4.2.2.1, 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for additional dwelling unit at 215 Lexington Road, parcels number 0026, subject to standard conditions.
Second. Okay, further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much, Mr. Park. Good luck. Hopefully with, you won't have too many graduate students home unemployed. Okey-dokey. Well, people keep staying, so I guess we're up to the main event here. This is a hearing of Simms, Simus Development and Permitting LLC for a variance special permit and site plan review under section 7.5, section 10, section 11.6, and 11.7 of the zoning bylaw for a 34-unit planned residential development at 1440, 1450, and 156B, I guess, Main Street, which is three parcels, 2409, 2408, 2407. Just, I'm gonna provide you some background that all of you probably know. So, this was first before the planning board in September of 2018, was the first hearing before the planning board. As I understand it, there have been 10 hearings, there were 10 hearings, and a site visit by the planning board in the subsequent 15 months or thereabouts, getting it to this place. As I mentioned, for those of you who weren't here at the beginning of the meeting, and as I mentioned, or as I mentioned for those who here were at the beginning of the meeting and say now, for those of you who are not, we have a planning board recommendation that was delivered about 48 hours ago. We understand, or I understand from something the town planner has given, information that town planner's given me, that the NRC, the Natural Resources Commission has reviewed this and has acted, generally acted favorably, but that there is not yet a written report from them, which is really required for us. Even if we were to completely get to the end tonight, we would, and all the way to a decision, we would be holding open the meetings and deferring our final decision till next month, just so that we could review all of the conditions and everything that are going on. So, ultimately, what we're hoping to do tonight, more than anything else, is hear a presentation and have, you know, a full discussion of issues that the members of the public would like to talk about. I will also say, just as one more thing, is that we've received a number of letters, pro and con, and sort of somewhere in between, raising various issues. Thank you very much. Your input is very much appreciated. This is always, these are always difficult processes. We've read all those letters, we've thought about those issues, we know that the planning board has in making its, in making its, doing its work. And then the final thing to mention is that, as I understand it, and I'm gonna ask the town planner to correct me if I'm wrong, there are two issues that are open that were not commented upon about, by the planning board, and one has to do with height, or height variance, and one has to do with the amount of ground being removed from the site.
Earth removal permit.
Pardon me?
Earth removal permit.
Earth removal permit. So, that, so that what we're being asked for here by this applicant, as I understand it, is approval of the general site, et cetera, et cetera, plus the earth removal permit, plus the height variance.
Correct. So, it's the earth removal permit section, a variance section, section 10, which is the PRD, and then your criteria findings under a special permit.
Lucky us. Okay. Yes, sir. We have this.
Hold up.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Project engineer, project engineer.
So, whoop, oh, sorry, just, we're getting a mic check here. Is it, is that on? Yes, can we, can you tap a little bit?
Hello?
No, hit the mic just a couple times, the mic up here. Okay, that's working. All right, and I'm sorry, it was Mr. Arrington or Harrington?
Richard Harrington.
Harrington, thank you, Mr. Harrington.
The project engineer from Williams &amp; Rogers with me is Jeff Ruda and Lander Simms, representing Simms Development and Permitting, along with Brad Leith and the attorney. Moving forward, I'd like to thank all the town and the staff, especially Ray and Elizabeth, for all the work behind the scenes in making this project possible to where it is today. What I have is a presentation slide which incorporates only the information that's public record today that's on your website. It's basically, we went through and talk about the overall options for development on this property, the history of it, of how we went through it, while being brief, because we know we're gonna continue it, and then allow the public to talk. So, this, there's three, basically, three patterns of development for this project, which are discussed by the applicant, which is the approval not required plan, which is the frontage lots, a definitive subdivision, which is a road with planning board approval, or the planned residential development, which is the Board of Appeals, which is why we're here today. This copy from the 2018 annual town report just basically says that there was two planned developments, PRDs submitted in 2018. One was culinary cottages, which the board has reviewed and approved. It was eight units, but now it's down to four units at the basic density. And then there is our project center main. In addition, the developer did file a 22-lot preliminary subdivision at the end of the year, basically an asset to, placed it onto the side while we continued speaking about the PRD. So, the first part of a project is that the applicant had us look at, what is the yield on a conventional basis to create the value of the property, in their eyes. And in their eyes, and then they proceeded to speak to the planning staff about the option for a planned residential development, which is the preferred option for the town in accordance to their envisioned, envisioned concrete. So, just to go through quickly, a standard pattern of development is approval not required lot, basically takes 22 days to get approved by the planning board. So, if we were to proceed with that preliminary plan, there would be basically five lots along Main Street that would be developed on 10,000 square foot. Lot areas with 80 feet of frontage, with allowance of a subdivision road. A typical pattern of development is to go from preliminary to definitive subdivision. The minimum amount of time for that is basically 10 months, from start to finish of filing the preliminary plan. And that would be for the additional lots 2 to 16, which along roads A and B. This plan was since withdrawn from the applicant as we proceeded with the preferred alternative of the town, which is an alternative pattern. It's identified in all your documents. A planned residential development has already proceeded to, since filing with the ZBA, 18 months so far. So we're a little bit longer, this is minus conceptual plans and getting wetlands approved, et cetera. So at this point, at the 18-month mark, we have two recommendations for approval with modifications. One from the planning board, and one from the Natural Resources Commission, which is pending, as you mentioned. We were looked at and heard about the envisioned concrete bridge to 2030. We discussed this in great detail with many of the members of the planning board. There was a change in the chairman halfway through the project, and also which resulted in additional adjustments to the project. So this envisioned concrete on, figured in 29, identifies this property as a smart growth potential. Identifies as an infill development, and also as a cluster opportunity. As you look at the area of this property, it's within the downtown area, very close to the town center. You'll see the dash red marks around it, which it's in close proximity to the train station as well. So the town has already identified this project as an ideal location for a alternative pattern of development. The applicant has exerted basically six criteria that he sees to be important and applicable to this project. Basically, there's a larger population that's growing of those over 65 years or older. So that is identified by, from up to 20% now, and then 10 years from now, in 2030, it'll be basically 34% of the population. There are other aspects that meet it, is walkability, close to the town center, et cetera, commuter rail, and all the other good things that the town has identified for the potential of this project. You look at this, and what is the traditional development that you've seen for over 25 years? You know, if you look at a typical playing of a game, if you look at the R, S, T, L, N, and E of a typical development, you know, you almost spell Center and Main. You'll see that when you have an A and R process with a conventional subdivision. The word center is almost filled up, but it doesn't really concentrate on the word main. So what this does is it's a by right subdivision. There's no, to your left, there's no really talk about the envisioned concrete and all the aspects of it. And then on the right, it's, you could be back to a different architect, being MZO group who worked on it originally, or other architects, individual, without much diversity.
Just, while I've got you there, I just, so there's five by right lots, and then there's lots 2 through 16, so this is 20 lots, then this traditional subdivision?
21.
21.
And then the A and R lot was number 22, which the board approved back in August.
Thank you.
So that's been, that's been recorded at the registry deed, and I believe the building permit was filed today? Was filed today. So as we talked about about five months ago, when we did receive the height relief for the A and R lot on Highland, the intentions were to move the current owner over to that A and R lot to allow this project to proceed. And so just to update the board, that is moving forward with the applicant filing for the building permit today for 10B Highland. Now, when you look at this suitable development, which is a special permit, you add a couple letters and you get Center and Main. You know, it basically completes out the desire for an envisioned concrete, on the left it's highlighted. And we also transitioned over to a local architect, being Elise Precara Stone. This is the preferred alternative. It's the result of many revisions and requests from both staff and the planning board, which results in a large park area, preservation of trees along the frontages, and adjustments to the common open space around the perimeters to improve the overall concept of the plan. So as, just to recap, as we move forward with all the bubbles that you have on top of the envisioned concrete text, we have a recommended, a recommended planned residential development with modifications, as we talked about, from the boards. We basically have the frontage and the access at this location of Main Street. We have a loop road, which will be private. We have seven to eight different styles of homes. We have larger houses along the frontage with the A units to match the harmonious with the houses along the frontage. We have smaller units along the side of Center Village on the left-hand side, which were requested by the planning director to reduce those square footages. And there is essentially lowered and pushed away from Center Village to meet their request. In addition, we were asked to provide a D and E style unit, which Elise will talk about later, which basically has a two-car garage, but then it has a separate facing one-car garage, so that it has the appearance of one dwelling unit, but it's actually a duplex, it's two. In addition, what we have is, in the middle, there's a community green with a common septic, with a septic system. And then three of the homes along Main Street will be connected to town sewer. There's additional potential to talk about this, so I'll just keep moving forward. It's a walkable neighborhood near the village center. Those are the criteria that are mostly identified within this envisioned concrete, which we believe this plan meets, without even looking inside the buildings for any additional benefits that this project does provide. What we were able to do with the last revision is the oval walkability of the path and the maintaining of the the trees towards Highland Street, of the larger trees, are complemented by the additional trees, the beech trees and the larger sugar maples that were also maintained to create a larger park. That was at the request of feedback from planning board and also from staff. We rotated this unit number three and moved unit number four into the middle of the property and adjusted the mail center location. So what you now have is a public space that will remain private within the project. It'll be Daniel Hayes Park, named after the previous owner. And it'll provide a walkability path through the project from Main Street to Highland, and also it'll go down to the lower part of the project. There's been many concessions and agreements and adjustments that this project has made along the way over the 18-month process. We came in with 36 units, which is one above the basic density. By the zoning, 35 units is the basic density. The applicant went to 36 to include an affordable unit. And that was added to the same road layout. During the process, that was accepted to remain during, but midway through when we came back, we were encouraged to drop two units. And so the applicant dropped two units, which one brought them down to below the basic density, which deducted the affordable component. We also increased the setbacks of dwellings away from Main Street and Center Village from meeting at the kitchen tables and dining rooms of the budding properties, which would be Center Village and also Mr. and Mrs. Marquis to the lower-left west corner of the frontage along Main Street. We've also increased, lowered the building foundations along Center Village to not have the buildings face back-to-back against each other, so that you're seeing window-to-window or basement-to-basement. So we lowered that grade and moved it away to accommodate them as well. We reduced the living square footage of six dwelling units to below 2,000 to match the design that Elise will tell you about, that is in the minimum for a typical dwelling in this project. We created the dwelling unit B1, we were asked to remove and provide one-car garages. We had more duplex developments, duplex buildings at the beginning of this project. We had a B1 and a B2 building together, and we were asked to provide one-car garages, which you'll see in your recommendation to, they're asking to provide even more. Midway through the process, there was an agreement that that was a nice development, nice layout, and proceeded to the definitive design. In addition, we reduced the density mix of the duplexes to accommodate one-car requests like I talked about. We also reduced the impervious coverage down to 32% by reducing that, those two buildings, and a portion of the driveway. And then, we also agreed to a reduction of the common open space area per the planning division, which included Masha, Elizabeth, and Delia, being the planning director, the town planner, and the natural resources director, to have one final go-around after we saved all the trees along the frontage, is how do we make this project look the best possible? And as you know, it's a balancing of what works and what's better at each location along this perimeter within the site, along the frontage of the site, and also along the back, where it's lower in elevation, along the edge of the wetlands that are isolated, and also the, the train rail. So what I was able to do is I looked at that plan, and there was extra, we were above the common open space requirement of providing at least 25% of the project being common open space. So we proceeded to reduce that down to 27%. At the beginning, we had about 34% common open space, which included areas around the perimeter. And you'll see that we had those areas identified as common open space. We were asked by staff to reduce the narrow strips along certain locations. And now you'll find, there'll be a recommendation from both the planning board and the natural resources to add that area back along the back to provide a connection to the town land, and also to the isolated wetland along the edge of the railroad. What we're experiencing is a process where it's a little bit of a push and pull, where where we've been very agreeable and amenable to every request possible. The applicant has allowed our office to make many revisions and adjustments to provide the best project for this neighborhood. And as a result, what is, has been occurring, which is typical, is that there's been a push and pull or changes in additional requests that we thought were agreed upon earlier into the project. Energy efficiency and going above and beyond the current requirements, as the building inspector Ray will tell you, that the energy code has been improved over the years, from 2012 to 2016, there's been improvements in lowering of the HERS rating. Right now, it's just a measurement of energy efficiency, and it's a combination of many items. It's not just one thing to plug into the product, and then it becomes that magical rating of below 55. The applicant has committed to an additional lowering of that rating of 52 across the entire project. That results in a 5% reduction above and beyond any typical home that you would construct within the town of Concord, and also within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You'll find that the applicant's letter, which he has submitted for the energy ratings and et cetera, is he's committed to a select number of homes that will be down even lower, down to the ratings of 30 to 40. And that will balance out the homes that will be provided as a typical around the 50 to 55, to make it the aggregate of 50. The building code, which didn't require it back in the day, now requires every home to be solar-ready. So that is a commitment that the regulations have upgraded without the PRD regulations changing. So everything will be ready for the owner or the user to install solar panels, to make this an even better project as far as energy components. That will go hand-in-hand with the envisioned concrete, where last year, in 2018, there's a, there's a report out there that they offered rebates, et cetera, for conversions of heating systems within the town, and also other aspects of, from the Concord Municipal Light Plant, to make this, to lower the emissions of carbon, et cetera, as they moved towards 2050. It'll be interesting to know what happens, and happened this past year, 2019, as we move forward to the goal of 2030. The applicant, in addition to that, has also agreed to provide the electrical vehicle charging outlets to each dwelling unit. We have been encouraged to reduce the septic flow, which was, can be from one bedroom to 90 bedrooms, down to 87, because of concerns from, from a couple neighbors or representatives of this town that have made commentary or testimony to the planning board. We have also preserved additional mature trees along Main Street for the public benefit, and that's to other aspects of the ecological benefits and overall goals towards the reduction of carbon, et cetera, for the town. We've been through multiple adjustments, but the traffic has been reanalyzed and rechecked by the town's consultant and provided to the board, along with the same stormwater analysis. So we're at a position right now where everything collectively is at a level above 75% completion. We're in agreement to provide a plan that meets all the requirements. You have a request by, by two, the planning board, natural resources, to make some minor adjustments. Some of them, we feel that go above and beyond the general requirements of this, of this board. We, you will see that when you review culinary cottages in our project, both comply with this PRD regulation. Both are significantly different. Culinary cottages provided a larger open area in the back, where it's, where there's farmland and previous projects in that area. I personally worked across the street from that project, so have a very good working knowledge of that area. In addition, provides the gardens, et cetera, so that there's a sense of social community, where they can get out and socialize within that community with empty nesters and also young families. Our project did have community garden in the back, and it did concentrate the open space along the back, so there was a wider connectivity between the town land, our wetlands, and the junction square open space. However, there was more of a priority or a public benefit placed upon the trees in the park area along the frontage. So we were encouraged to minimize and to move things and to do the best we possibly can to make that the focal point of this project. In addition, you encouraged us to increase the density when we're close to the trains. So this project does increase the density above that conventional project, which is a standard and traditional, where it's the A and R lots and the subdivision road. So instead of carving off a couple A and R lots, like the one that just got filed for building permit, and building a couple homes, and then filing for the road, the applicant and owner have been patient and have been working with the town to extend the review process by over nine months to make this the best project possible for everyone. So alternative patterns, so just a quick run through the mix and diversity of the housing choices, which you already had before. This matrix, which was presented in previous slides, basically talks about, is a unit mixture, where we have A-styles, B1, B2, C1, C2, D and E. They have combinations of three bedrooms and two bedrooms for diversity. There's also nine first-floor masters in one building style, and two first-floor masters in a different style. So you have diversity in first-floor masters to target the over 65 population, which is growing within this area. You have two-car garages, and you also have one-car garages. And you have detached buildings that are higher than when we applied for this application, and we still have attached units. So that, because we applied for the one, accommodated the one-car garages, you have a lower percentage of mix of duplexes to detached. 23% of the units are duplexes, you know, with the reduction of the two units, and those are the C1 and C2 units, and the D and E units. So there's two, two of each, basically. And what that provides you is a combination of different square footages and different looks for those duplexes at different locations within the project. 35% of the units are one-car garages, and that was the addition of the six units that went from duplexes with two-car garages for both units, down to detached B1 and B2 units with six B1, one-car garages, and along with the other ones. There is a, 32% of the units are the first-floor master bedrooms, which I spoke about, which are the B2 units and the C2 units. 18% of the units are under 2,000 square foot living area. Not many homes have been constructed below their square footage, probably since the, at the Concord Riverwalk. We have provided a balance, we were encouraged by Masha, the planning director, to meet the needs of the, of that workforce aspect, and we worked diligently with Elise Stone when she was brought on board to even make that the best look possible. So we have a spectrum where we are below 1,700 to 1,800, up to almost 2,000. And that's the living area, which excludes the basements and things like that, which no one really counts except for the assessor's office. So we have that spectrum, and then the highest living square footage is just under 2,855. And those are the units that are close to the Main Street, so then when you look at those larger homes, it's harmonious with that stretch of road, and it blends in nicely with that part of the project. The B2 units are 2,000, just under 2,500, and that is with the first-floor master and the footprint's a little bit larger than a master on the second floor. So the evolution of this neighborhood, just to summarize and give the board a brief history of the process, starting from left and going right, you know, we had MCO associates, which is a different architect. We started back in July of 2018 with 36 units at the top, top corner. It had a, a center loop in, entry, two entries, one entry and one exit. We had a common septic area in a neighborhood park in the middle within easement. And we focused all, the majority of the common open space along the back to connect the town lands to the junction square, along with perimeter open space. In December 2018, we walked the property and we started to preserve the trees to the right of the path, and then we also discussed that you could fill up to 5,000 square feet of isolated wetlands and trade off that area and save trees up front. So we made that switch. Elise Stone was brought on board in March 2019, where we basically said, walk the project, walk the site, walk the neighborhood, meet with staff, and come up with a product that, that works for the- works for the state board and meets the architectural styles to blend in with this request of town. Same project, we presented the duplexes and in the green identify the B1 units where we changed to one car garages along the lower portion of the property. The renderings that we presented up to the top left was in April, the 36 units. It had two units to the right of the entry and to the left, it provided the park, the connection still of the trail from Main Street to Highland and it had the path going down. It had a full perimeter connection of common open space of 15 feet along Junction, the isolated wetland and 15 feet along the back, which was removed and is now requested to be applied back to and also along the townland and up around and back down to the Main Street. This was in response to meeting with the neighbors in Center Village, Mr. and Mrs. Bakke. The applicant also met with the neighbor at this location. We were also received testimony from a select board member from across, on the opposite side of Main Street, on previous designs when we had the triplex at that location that was up higher, that they didn't want to see those buildings, they thought that was not attractive. And Mr. and Mrs. Bakke also did not like that location. So we eliminated the triplex, pushed the units away from the location, and we lowered them in elevation, so you'll only see a part of the rooftop from Main Street in that direction. And you also have landscaping to screen that area. We reduced the two units out back by ever removing a C1 and C2 unit. And we reshaped and relocated and provided more of a plaza area so that you had a connectivity of the open space through the middle of the project. So when you walk down the entry, you could go down to the back through the middle. The board, planning board, strongly encouraged us to focus on these two units at this location and expand the park area. There was also objection to including the common open space along Center Village, which is of sufficient width and meets the same side yard setback width of a typical lot in this district. And we proceeded to decide what could we do to make that accomplishment happen and maintain this as a planned residential development. We proceeded with a December 2019 revision with an expanded park. We essentially moved the house closest to the road into the middle of the site and we rotated unit number four and preserved the five to six trees and reshaped that common open space and made it an additional area. While we were sitting down with this revision and asking staff, they liked it being Marsha, Elizabeth and Delia, they also asked if we could make the rear yards a little bit better from the November plan to the December plan. And they talked about maybe perhaps eliminating some of the open space, common open space near the A and I lot, perhaps trimming some other areas so that there was more of a uniform rear yard area along the back of the units along the wetland area. So we agreed to do that, which lowered the common open space, but still was at least So what we have is, we were asked to do a prepared and area changes, which is green, it's not really showing up. Then we went through a whole iteration of, well, what's the common open space? What's the slope? What's existing? What's the buffer? And they basically took the engine apart and looked at it as a whole. Put it back together and basically when you look at the infinite possibilities, this is a pile of sand. We have plenty of frontage, you can move that road in many locations. There was a large recommendation from the Highland folks to not have the primary entrance off of their driveway, off their road. And that's supportive of the traffic restrictions in the morning and at night along that. So what you'll find in your packet is that you have letters of basically conceding that they prefer this development over a conventional development, although in their heart of hearts, they do not want to see it developed at all. So that's somewhat, to summarize that, we preserved a wall and a path and we're going to make that, maintain that curtain at that location of some of the vegetation. We are in agreement to the request from planning and conservation to reestablish that 15-foot strip along the back of the property to connect the townland with the isolated wetlands. We're also in agreement to reconnecting along the perimeter on all sides and calling it all common open space. We've made a understanding that this is not going to be a conservation restricted area that you may see when you're down, say, at the previous PRD on Old Bedford Road. It'll be a restriction within the common deed, master deed of the condominium. It'll also be held through the select board or another manner where it's still restricted, but it's just, it has a different checks and balances. So it'll be common open space, you know, be preserved and protected. This is the, the area changes again, this, we were asked to show what changed and we did. And so it basically shows, it might not show in color here, but there's basically an improvement in establishing more area along the frontage, squaring up the two lots, one and two, so that they have a setback that's typical to a house lot in that area. So we try to provide that same 15-foot side yard setback so that there'll be fencing and there'll be a living fence also and there'll be monumentation with cement monuments that it'll be crystal clear where their yard is and where the park is. And that'll be evidenced by all these dots, these squares that you see along the entire common open space. My apologies with the location of the project, the board here. So what you're seeing is, there was a request that conservation reinforced us also that there is monumentation along the back of those lots near the wetlands. I've been talking with Marsha, she didn't want a full wall or fence, so she wanted segments of walls, segments of fencing and shrubbery to still allow people to walk down in that area if they desired. So we are, we'll update the landscape plan to accommodate that. So what you have is, with the request to remove those narrow strips and still be at least 25%, we have an open space easement one for the park, which will be privately owned, but will be at public access. We removed the strip along Junction Square and then we created a common open space easement two in the back for conservation purposes for the residents that will be private. We designated the area that was common open space halfway through the project along Center Village as basically just open space, which will be protected also by the condominium master deed. And then we have the common open space area in the middle, which has our septic system. So collectively, we still have about 34% open space with the reductions along the perimeter to make this a better looking project. We walked the site with Kimmerhorn Landscape Architect. She's the same architect that was involved with culinary cottages. You'll see that this picture of the beech trees. She also worked in the Fowler Library, so if you're looking for an example of her work, that is evident after, you know, they have matured after the addition to that. Our office and myself personally worked on the recharge and the drainage for that project to be approved. So we're not doing anything differently on our site, stormwater in relation to the stormwater or access, walkability or planting material that hasn't been done within the town already. So what we have is a public park that was agreed upon to be a big public benefit and meet the requirements of the envisioned Concord 2030. And basically maintains the visual qualities along the public roads and secures and hides the buildings in the back, which are seeking the height relief due to topography and to the walkability of this project, which is a component of your goals. This is the landscape plan. It hasn't been updated to reflect the new layout. So upon approval, there'll be a recommendation or condition to have her update this plan, adjust the trees, move them a little bit further back for the town engineer, six feet off the back of the sidewalk, maintain the trees along towards Highland and also make the adjustments in the back for the protection in securing the benefits of the backyards. To summarize again, this is based on walkability. It is generally flat along Main Street in Highland. It rises up 14 feet to where the existing homes are. It drops down to a lower area by about 36 feet to the back where the open space is. And it drops back an additional nine feet to the back along the rear. So there's basically a, from 150, 150, there's about a 30-foot drop from Main Street frontage down to the edge of the wetlands. It's very similar to the relief that was already granted for the A and I lot in regards to height. Within your decision for that, you identified as we, the dwelling for the A and I lot was as close to the frontage as possible and was within the building envelope for that. All the units arcs along Main Street are as close to the frontage as possible with the 20-foot setback along the perimeter. We did have additional homes in the front with less in the back that required some relief, but we were, again, requested for that to provide that benefit up front. Location plan, this is the current December 9 revision plan that you have in your packet. We updated the first four sheets and all the other remaining sheets will be updated upon approval of this project by the board. We updated the table and it's all within your information and narrative. As you look at this location plan, you'll see that Highland Street and Main Street all are basically single family lots, some are duplexes or larger homes. You'll see the two homes on Highland are compatible and harmonious with that portion of the neighborhood abutting us. We are in harmony with Main Street. And then in the back, the visual qualities are not really viewable from the public streets in that location. We are still extending the, we have a right of way loop with the sidewalk, which the public will be allowed to access as well, along with the green in the middle. There's an existing six-foot high fence along the town of Concord land, which the, we have been requested to remove. So with that combination, the natural vegetation, they're going to establish along the back line there of that 15-foot strip, along with maintaining the open lawn area, it's going to allow for wildlife improvement in that area because the fence won't be there and then there'll be additional vegetation to benefit them. Junction Square is private open space. It's described to be maintained as an open park. There's a home, there's an association of the owners of those units within that business development. And there's no access or allowance for public access in that direction. So we don't have any pass to the left or the right, based on feedback from a trustee from Junction Square and also from Delia Kay to the left about connection over to Conant through that abutting townland. Other connections to sidewalks and paths were discussed with other abutters, but in shown in previous designs and they were respectfully said that we don't need to have those and we can just walk down to Main Street. So. Existing conditions, as we talk about the relief from height and the earth removal, when you start at zero, you go plus 14 and then you're down 30 feet, there's a requirement to grade the site, to meet the requirements for a cluster development at this infill location. So what you'll see is we maintain the grades for the first 100 feet coming in to not disturb the root systems of the trees to be maintained. We do begin to grade and drop down to meet the grades along the loop area. So what you'll see is there'll be a cut area on the left side or the westly side along Center Village to meet, there's an additional cut there because of the feedback from those neighbors. There's additional cut because of the walkability request for this project. It has to be handicap accessible. The maximum grade for a handicap accessible for private walkway is 5%. If it was a subdivision road and the sidewalks within the right of way, it can go 7% because it's within a future private or public road. So when you do have a conventional subdivision, you can grade down quicker and you can have a situation where it's not as much of a disturbance or a change, less of a cost in construction. So what is occurring is there's, it's difficult to call it a financial hardship, but there are additional costs associated with maintaining this as a cluster. It's the maintaining the road at a flatter grade, having a meander around the locations and dealing with the additional criteria for open space, increased setbacks of property lines, et cetera. The layout plan, this is, we already talked about verbatim, this is the sheet number three. Again, this, we're happy to update this back to the previous revision that shows the 15-foot strip connections along the left and the right. Sheet four is a topographic plan. So what we have, again, we had a little bit of a high point and maintained the grade as we came into the entrance. On the right, we started to descend down at that 5% maximum grade. And then we're matching basically from the pavement at Highland down to the edge of the road so that we can have a handicap accessible walkway along that area to match what's there today. In addition, we're also coming down and graded along the left side to match the foundation grades that were requested from Center Village, so that the roof heights were not, were lower from their side. The back lower area matches the breakout grading through the septic, so this is an area where we've cut it, cut it at both locations and you're basically meeting at a low point and leveling out. And then you're basically blending to the left and you're blending to the right to match the grades on the side perimeters. And then along the rear of the development, instead of having full walkouts, we were asked to extend the grading around to keep more volume of material on the site to reduce the earth removal. And Ali has provided, you know, additional landscape walls, et cetera, to maintain more fill on the property. Building height, we, similar to the building height relief for the A and I lot next door, where we located every house down Highland and compared the roof, all the proposed dwellings along Main Street comply with the height. They're beginning at elevation 156 for existing proposed grade and they're going up for a typical roof peak to about 32 to 30 feet, so which maintains the height below that 35-foot requirement when measured from the existing grade. So the units one through six to nine, down to units 12, where you're cutting down along Center Village, those are all in compliance with the height. As you get into the middle, where you're trying to provide the walkability and you're also down the bottom to have the density desired in the topography, it does not comply with the height. It complies with the height when measured from the street grade. So when you look at it, it's just like we talked about with the A and I lot, when you drive into the neighborhood, you don't notice any difference. And all those roof peaks that require the height relief are lower in elevation than the homes along Highland and along Main Street. So you're basically going to be stepping down away from the public street. So something that's 20 feet lower actually isn't compliant than ones that are up front. So it's basically, we discussed this in mid-process with the planning board of around April and there was consensus that, you know, the one car garages, the park at 36 was acceptable. And yes, the grading and the relief seems to be part of the process that's required for PRD. Earth removal, there's certain criteria we have to identify. The removal of soil is incidental to this, in connection with this construction of the PRD upon authorization and a special permit. The volume to be removed shall be conducted in accordance with the approved plan and in accordance with the trucking plan, the grading, erosion, and those aspects reviewed by police and fire. We have those within your packet. The grading will be regulated with suitable ground cover, including landscape plan and respect the abutting properties of additional trees and vegetation. The applicant seeks removal in excess of 1,000 cubic yards. So that's why we're here, we're exceeding that 1,000 cubic yards. The cut and fill has been checked by the potential contractor, Patriot Excavation, and you'll see information to support the trucking schedule and also the estimated quantities for that. That's basically the overview and then we could talk about the architecture from Ali Stone.
Hi. Mr. Harrington, while Mr. Stone is getting ready, you, I take it, have seen the planning board recommendation to us, correct?
Yes.
So the recommendations have, I was just a little unclear from your presentation. The recommendations, you know, specifically suggest modifications, including an overall reduction in the total amount of impervious coverage and an increase in unit diversity, smaller unit square footage, incorporation more than, more, one more, more one car garages, inclusion of duplex units or even a triplex unit, electric utilities with no fossil fuels, ties in, tie-ins, and then the 10 to 15-foot natural greens base corridor, I think you mentioned. So it would be useful for me ultimately at some point here to understand which of these things you, I thought I heard you say that some of those things you sort of agreed with and some of those things you didn't agree with, so it was just a little hard for me to understand which of them are which.
Certainly. The, on page 15 of the, of the recommendation, 10.4.2.6, number one, we have already reduced impervious coverage. We are below the threshold by 18%. So this goes within to the discussion of, at what point is it an acceptable project? At what point is, should it be approved? We've worked on this with eight revisions over nine months and when we already thought we were in, at an agreement, there's still a request to reduce it even further. So I think we're at the point where unless, fire department, we are 24-foot wide, so we're okay with reducing that a little bit more. So if fire wants to allow that reduction, that could be an option to reduce some pavement in that, for that, number one. The smaller unit square footage, we do meet that. This is 1A with the C1, C2 and E units. And that provides a diversity in square footage. This is 1A with the C1, C2, and E units, and that provides a diversity in square footage. So the applicant is unwilling, is not minimal to reducing any additional square footages. The incorporation of one more one-car garages, we have provided a certain percentage, which we believe does provide a balance, and the applicant is not willing to reduce that any further. The inclusion of more duplex units or even a triplex, we did have a triplex. It was looked unfavorably upon with the previous architect. We don't believe a triplex is suitable with the current architecture styles that have been provided. We did have more duplex units. So, you know, when we're asked to do something, we do it, and then we get to the end and we're asked to put some back. So we're in this little bit of a quagmire, if you will, where you have a process that has proceeded that we thought was a good-looking plan, and then we're asked to adjust it again. So that's... Use of only electric utilities with no fossil fuel tie-ins or utilities, that is the goal for 2030 as you move forward. The applicant has made considerable progress with making that hers at 50, providing sole panel and select aspects to meet those goals. But the proposal is to provide fossil fuel tie-ins for every dwelling unit. Some may not need to use it that much, but having that availability and with the efficiencies that are also within the homes today will minimize that also and reduce that carbon footprint. Two, the use of only electric utility, oh, so that's number two. Three, a 10- to 15-foot natural green space corridor connection as part of the open space between the adjacent town-owned land and the isolated wetland, and no calling for the removal of the existing chain-link fence along the town-owned land. We had that on the plan, got taken off at their request, and we're happy to put it back on.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Stone, a lot of people want to speak here, so I'm hoping that you can be brief. I mean, we've seen a lot of plans, we've seen a lot of stuff. So in any event...
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. So I just wanted to start that I've lived in Concord 25 years. I live on Old Marlborough Road in Concord. So when I was approached to do this project, you know, I really looked at a lot of the projects. I mean, most of my work is individual clients, so I was kind of looking at the architecture I do for that, the renovations and new houses. So we have... I'll just go quickly through the units. So the floor plans, I won't bother going through there. So in the A units, those are the larger units, and I kind of came up with three different designs for those. The first one, as you see, has the wraparound porch, it has the room over the garage, it has the garage facing sideways. You know, that's one style. We're using a lot of the elements that you see around West Concord, the extended rakes, the, you know, water tables, the porches, porticoes, that type of thing, shutters on this unit. So those are the side elevations. So the A2 unit looks slightly smaller. We've done a way... it's no porch, it's a portico, two-story bay. Again, these are units, if you walk around West Concord, you see, so, you know, putting shingles, mixing up some of the materials, shingles, clapboards, et cetera, bay windows. And then the A3 unit is going with a hip roof. There's a lot of hip roof houses throughout the area. So this is a hip roof with a dormer, just a front porch with a hip roof. So again, just taking a similar floor plan but changing it up so that it does look different, similar to many of the houses in the surrounding neighborhoods. Okay, so the next units are the B units. So these are the units Rich referred to. We did have these as a duplex at one point, and then we did separate them out. The B units are... one is two-car garage, the other's a single-car garage. Again, changing up the porches and the windows, the shutters, et cetera, some of the different elements to make them look a little different. The B units, what we tried to do is the main body of the house, keep them fairly narrow so that the roofs would go up, you know, wouldn't go up as high. These are the units that are mostly affected with the height, asking for the height restriction. I want to just point out the back of the B units, what we've tried to do is bring with retaining walls, so the earth around, so it doesn't feel too looming in the back, and we've reduced the number of walkouts so that, you know, you just see in the narrow part there. Did I go in the wrong direction? No, this is just another, you know, example of the B unit. So the next unit... okay, so the next one are the C units. So the C units are duplex, and they have the single-car garage. One of the C units has a first-floor master, the other does not, has the second-floor master. These are two-bedroom houses. These are the smallest one, is 1,750 square feet. So these are more cottage-style, cape-style, so meaning that the second floor is within the roof structure, and these are along by Center Village, which required them to be a little lower. So in this, again, tried to use the architecture, you know, we've put some, you know, vertical siding in, some elements to kind of change it up. That's the back of the C units. Then the next unit are the DE units. These, we have two of these. These are, you know, great on the corners so that as a duplex, you're not entering it both from the same side. We have one entry from the front, so this floor plan shows here, I'll just get to the elevation. So on this elevation, it looks like, you know, that's your main entrance, you have a two-car garage, and then the other entrance is on the other side, so it looks like its own house. So each unit can look like it's an individual house but connected. The E unit's also a smaller unit, has a single-car garage. Anyway, so that's just a quick overview, if anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Stone. So I'm just... I think at this point, everyone's been sitting very patiently with the board's permission. I think we'll filter in our questions as we go, but I'd really love to hear from the public. So just as a rec... just remember, we are recording, so we have to do it at a microphone. Pardon me. And just your name and address, and off we will go. So who would like to start us out?
Yes, sir.
Scott Richardson, 260 Elsor Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Richardson.
I'm struck by the fact that the applicant apparently is not proposing any modifications to the plan based on what the planning board recommended. I've attended numerous planning board meetings. There's been a tremendous amount of opposition and concern about the scope of this project since the beginning, and I agree that the applicant has indeed adjusted the plans multiple times, improving it incrementally, but there's still a ways to go. In their most recent revision, they took away the affordable unit, so there's a whole conversation we could have about the impact of our meeting our requirements for four houses, even if we had 34 units that I think we need now. I remain concerned about the fact that the applicant is asking for 17 times the amount of earth to be removed. That's a huge precedent. If we approve this, that's a huge precedent that we're setting. And I think we need to have a real conversation, which the planning board did not have, about the earth removal and the implications of the earth removal, the volume of trucks that are going to require to remove that, and what's the impact going to be on the air quality in West Concord while that's happening. So I'm very concerned about that. And I'm also struck by the applicant saying that we already thought we had an agreement. I don't know what that means. They've been asked to adjust the plans. I think reasonable people made really good suggestions that have improved the plan, and I wouldn't argue those are concessions. I think those are improvements that make this something that will be appropriate for our town. So I think that... I hope this board really listens to the community, and there's another meeting perhaps for people who didn't know this was coming up tonight because they just had the planning board meeting a couple nights ago. So you can really, really hear the broad perspective and the depth of the thinking and the benefit of the community of this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Others? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jeff Mannigan, 205 Prairie Street.
Mr. Mannigan.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to... the board has really got to see a lot of this for the first time. We've been dealing with this, with the planning board for the last, you know, year, year and a half. So a lot of the stuff up on these maps might be new to you, but a lot of the green space that you're seeing, it looks like while they're giving us all this open space, the one in the direct center that says "Community Green" is their septic area, okay? That's all septic. All those homes around it, that's where they're all getting pumped in, and I don't know anyone in town who's going to go play on a septic field, okay? So it's open space, it's not being developed, how about that? Okay? Secondly, the town land that's over here, that's actually conservation land, okay, which is on the western side, and then the park area, which is the junction area on the east, okay? That is connected, and the piece that they have, the common open space up top, that is actually swamp land, okay? So what they're looking to do is add a whole bunch of fill from the front and push it back so that it adds onto where the fill area is, okay? So where all those homes are in the back. There is no connecting between the two sides, which is part of the 2030 plan, okay? The Envision Concrete asks for connecting existing trails and open space in terms of town land. There is not. It goes on to, they said that they have a sidewalk on the west, and then there's a sidewalk on the right, and you can walk along the streets if you're welcome to hike on that area, okay? In terms of the wildlife corridor that the planning board was asking for, a 10-foot-wide wildlife corridor is the piece on the back. That's why it's a straight line, because that's where their property line is, okay? At the very top of it, on the north. And then right beyond that is where it starts to slope up to the railroad track, okay? So there is no wildlife corridor connecting these two pieces of the land, okay? All these improvements that the town's been asking for, the residents in the area have been asking for these improvements, okay? They've been very, very hesitant to have any of them, okay? Only when they're getting really, really heavy opposition do they start to concede anything, okay? PRD, pretty much what they're doing is they're putting the development into a PRD. All these things are not really... it's not real density. Their density is the fact that they're putting so many in there. It's not smaller units all dense together, which is what a PRD really is about. These homes are 35, you know, 100 square feet, 4,000 square feet. I mean, those are large, large homes, okay? Being taken advantage of the PRD outline in terms of the bylaws for PRD, that's how they're trying to get this thing through. And the bottom line is, the homes in the back should have been eliminated a long time ago, but the problem is that they pay too much for the property, okay? So they need all those additional homes up there in which to get their profit, their money back, okay? Those should be eliminated, and the things, the home should be a little bit more spaced, and open space should be increased. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mannigan. Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Prairie Street.
Are people hearing? No, it's not, apparently. Oh, I think it's... now the light isn't on it. Can you check it, Elizabeth? When she came in here, there was a light that she pushed on.
Can you tap that one, too?
Nope. Push the... Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Prairie Street.
Thanks, Ms. Quackenbush.
Thank you. So I would point out that the 18...
I'm sorry, you didn't... I didn't get your address.
206 Prairie Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I would add that the 18 months it's taken to get to this point should be considered positive rather than negative. It's because there was a lot of citizen input, and in my humble opinion, Sims made minor adjustments, which is why it's taken such a long time. There's a great deal of interest in this spot exactly because Envision 2020 pointed it out as a high-density development opportunity right next to the train. It's... a lot of people care about this space. I think I'm disappointed that the applicant has not... is not working with a planning board in terms of their recommendation about reducing impervious space for a couple of reasons. One, what's listed as Daniel Hayes Park is really sloped. It's not something you really can use as a park. Maybe a third of it is, I don't know what the slope would be, but it's something that maybe you go sledding on, but you'd end up in a road. It's not a park that you can play ball on or anything like that. So it's kind of a misnomer to call it a park. It really is kind of a hill. And in the back, the wildlife corridor, 10 to 15 feet is, you know, it's like, you're not going to get animals to walk along a space like that. It's too confining, it's not inviting. I do think it would be great if those back units had been eliminated because then that really would connect the two wildlife areas, which was one of the initial... I think the NRC is going to be saying that same thing, and I hope that you will be listening carefully to those arguments. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Quackenbush. Sir, so do we think this one's working? I'm sorry. No, it's dead. Okay. Dead.
Hi there. Jeff Edgers, 50 Highland Street.
Edgers?
Edgers, E-D-G-E-R-S.
Thank you, Mr. Edgers.
G.
Yep.
Just one quick question. If we sent letters in recently about some of the details of things we want monitored that weren't in the planning board report, should I repeat them here or are you taking those down?
Well, I mean, we... I can assure you that the planning staff, both Nancy and Elizabeth and Heather and everybody that I've gotten so many emails from, have immediately forwarded everything to us. So you certainly... I am certainly happy to have you make your points, but you should do so recognizing that, yes, we have seen them all.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, just the larger thing, and we've all heard these arguments for two years now, you know, we would love on Highland Street for that not to be developed. It would be great. But what we think people are not recognizing or understanding properly is it's not a choice between not developing it or approving the PRD. It's, to us, the choice between approving the PRD or going back to that traditional subdivision, which we see as less positive for the neighborhood and for the town, where there's no open space, where there's no connection. It sounds like, from what they're saying, from what the planning board has recommended, that there now could be a connection where we could... the town will take down that six-foot fence and we could walk through the subdivision or we could walk in back, which we can't right now, and go on to the conservation land and on to Conan and into the park. But, you know, it seems like there's more of a connection. Also, from where Main Street and Highland are, the conventional subdivision would be more intrusive. We'd see these very large houses right on the road. Here, we'd see actual open space. I agree, there's more we'd love to see the developer do to reduce the footprint, but we've spent more than two years working with this developer, and the planning board has really done an admirable job pushing them, and they've made a lot of concessions, everything from the reduction of garages to just the houses not looking very attractive and looking more in the character of the town. And again, I just would stress, going back to that original plan for those 22 big houses with no accessibility, no open space versus the PRD. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edger. Others? We're always happy for people who want to speak to Meander in the direction, so that's a good...
Darren Brown, 86 Highland Street. My kitchen window looks out onto this property. I wanted to speak to the height requirements and the variance around the height. This property is on a very sloped height right now. My house is also. I mean, I have two stories of stairs down to my backyard. The towns... the way it's drawn up, this height variance, does not work for any lots that have any type of slope to them. So I... specifically for the height variance, when you're looking at the individual houses in this development, keep in mind that the town bylaw as it's written now really does not work well for any property that has a slope of any significant measure to it. So I know that's one of the bylaws... slope of any significant measure to it. So I know that's one of the bylaws you're looking at with this, and it's just not well-written. So keep that in mind.
Mr. Brown, just to remind me, I think, did you also speak when we were looking at the other lot? Yes, right?
Yes, I did. ANC lot is directly abutting me, and my property is very much the same as it.
Great, thank you. I was just trying to remind myself. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Uh, yes, sirs, sirs, however, however you wanna get there.
Michael Amster, forty-four Prairie Street.
Mr. Amster.
Uh, I'm struck by the request for the variances, and I'm not sure that I can understand what is being given back to the, to the town in return for these very significant variances. I'm concerned that the removal of that much earth is going to affect the water flow, subterranean water flow in the areas, so that the nearby buildings are gonna end up with water in their basements because things have been disrupted. The other thing is, well, one of the, one of the many things, is the fact that this, this development, this proposed development, you spoke earlier about the character of the town and, and the traffic and all that. This development is just not gonna end up, is just not gonna be placed there. It's gonna take three years of an incredible amount of traffic, an incredible amount of movement in a very, very busy area, and it's gonna be a huge disruption. And my sense about it is that people are gonna drive along Route sixty-two, and they're gonna come upon this development, and they go, "How did that happen? Where did that come from?" So, I mean, I could go on for a long time, because I was in most of these meetings, and I've heard all the, the discussions from the, the near-in neighbors about the concerns. But we'd certainly appreciate it if you would consider making a site visit to see exactly what, what is going on in that area. The other, another major concern is the fact there's only one way in and one way out. And given thirty or forty or fifty cars in and out every day, that's gonna be a major, major tie-up for those for the time when people are coming home from work and going to work. So we just hope that you'll review this with an eye to all the things that are involved here, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amster. Just a quick clarification with the town planner. I think that, without getting into the substance necessarily, I think that the, the two variances are really in our purview as opposed to the planning board, and I think, or the, the earth removal permit, excuse me, and the variance, height variance. And I think that the height variance is largely based on the fact that Mr. Brown was talking about a little bit, is that as all this fill is moved around in and out, that there's concern about how the way it's supposed to be measured may run into those issues. And I think that earth fill is largely, or some of it at least, is due to the fact that, just in order to get grades of roads in there and sidewalks and everything else that would meet the accessibility requirements, that you've got, you gotta cut some property if you're gonna make this particular PRD work. But did I misstate any of that, Elizabeth? On the other hand, you are now all awake.
That is correct. I'll let the building commissioner speak to how building height is measured. For the grade and the accessibility issue as far as the percent grade, I don't think there was, in all this time, especially with town staff or engineering or fire department, an actual in-depth discussion about changing the grade of the road to, you know, seven, or the sidewalks to seven percent. And, you know, whether the building commissioner can contact the architectural access board to see if that would require a variance, or if that's something that can be discussed as part of this plan, if that would significantly change the volume of the grading. Seven percent, so you're now, you're now talking about, you know, basically balancing two different things. Seven percent, it's not five percent, it's not ADA compliant, but it's seven percent, and it reduces the grading. So you're talking trade-offs in different directions. The comment about reducing some of the grading and the impervious coverage from a roadway that's twenty-four feet wide to twenty-two feet wide, that would be solely a conversation that I would have to bring in the fire chief and, you know, whether they feel that twenty-two feet wide for this type of development. There are developments in town that are denser with, you know, more narrow roads, but that's not a conversation that I can have or direct the board about.
Right, thank you. Um, yes, sir, I think you were, oh, sorry, go ahead.
If you want, the building commissioner can speak to how height is measured.
Oh, sure, we'll let the building inspector, sorry.
So I just wanna touch on what Elizabeth said about the five percent and the seven percent. So she asked me previously before she spoke about it, and my first thought was, sure, you can go to the access board for a variance, but when you get over five percent, it's actually a ramp, so you would need yard rails, so I don't know how that would work in the design. And as far as measuring the height of a structure on a lot, we start from the existing grade. So when you have a, you know, so most of the houses that are built are on lots that are already there. You know, the road aren't cut in, there's no grading, so, especially with this site with the changes in elevation, you know, for him to put his roads in, his existing grade, right now is gonna change substantially. So his starting point.
So you're saying that if you put in fill, for example, if you put in five feet of, five, five feet of fill, that would, on some property, then build a house on it, it would already be five feet higher as far as you're, you're concerned, even though it was, it was-
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we, you know, we went into that out on, was it Bedford Road?
Right.
With the business, you can't, it conformed to the height requirement by putting in a whole bunch of fills, so that, so that, uh, Ray.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Thanks, Ray. Yes, sir.
Dave McGonigal, thirty-one Highland Street.
Mr. McGonigal.
I think I would agree with most of my neighbors that it's overall unfortunate that this property is being developed, but I think the, the extended period of time that it's taken, it's provided the opportunity to kind of accept that this is a reality. And I, I agree that the developer has adjusted things and listened to us, and what we have here is the best option that we've seen so far. And I would like to just voice my support for it in, rather than the, the standard subdivision that would be the alternative.
Thank you, Mr. McGonigal. Others, I know you've said a lot of things at planning board meetings and have written letters, and we've read all of those, too, so. Okay, great. So I think at this point, we sort of started on it a little bit, but it would be helpful, I think, to the board if we could sort of just walk over exactly what's being required with respect to the variances and the earth removal permits. And in particular, I know that there were a lot of meetings and, and, excuse me, a lot of mails, emails and, and letters talking about, you know, when do you, when's the construction being done, and how much is hauled, and where it's hauled, and all that kind of stuff. And I'm just trying to make sure that I have, in my mind at least, if not others, kind of what, where are, it went on, and it didn't scream, good. Uh, where we, you know, what, what, what is our purview here? What are we, where are we looking specifically to think about that? It's not something that I've run into on the earth removal side on the board before, so I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm square with the town staff on that. Is it working?
Yes.
Now it is. No, I think, yeah.
So there's a lot going on with this project, and there's a lot for everybody to digest and understand. And I think what I've heard, at least with the comments, and what I'd like to suggest, given that it's ten o'clock at night, not that I was here till eleven on Tuesday, that doesn't matter, is, I, if it would be helpful for the board, I, I do agree that a site visit is, would definitely be helpful and something that you should do during that period of time between now and the, and the next meeting. Traditionally, I do a staff report for the planning board. It goes through in the sections of the bylaw and provides information. I can more than happy be, take that report, update it with the new information, and have all the sections of the bylaw in there for you to go through, include the planning board and the natural resources recommendations under the appropriate section, so you can see everything in context, and you'll have that all for, before you at your next meeting.
Well, it sounds good to me. Any problems? Okay, besides that, I won't be the chair.
Thanks.
So I think that, so the next, so that leads to the next question, which is, when an appropriate site visit might be, I think. And I don't know if we wanna try to schedule it with a poll, or how we wanna try to, to deal with that. Our next meeting is February thirteenth. When is the next planning board meeting, by the way?
Uh, planning board meets in two weeks, January twenty-first.
Okay, so, and are they gonna, at that meeting, were they going to, is their planning board, is their report finalized or not?
Yes, that's their final recommendation, yep.
Okay. Uh, anyway, so site visits. Would you wanna just send a poll around so that we can try to get there?
This is the first time all five members have been at this table at one time. If all of you can look at your schedules right now and come up with a date and a time, that's preferable. If not, Heather can easily send out a doodle poll, and the site visit, if more than a, three of you are there, then it is, you know, required to be noticed, so we do need forty-eight hours.
Do the poll or do the what? I think we're just gonna do the poll. I mean, by the time we actually really try to, I've done this before, by the time we start to get into calendar dates, it'll just be, okay, so let's do it. But let's try to get it done in the next, I mean, I, I understand we're gonna try to do the best we can here in terms of the poll. I'd love to see it get done in the next couple of weeks, if we possibly can.
If the board can at least provide a preference of whether morning or-
Morning.
Late afternoon or a weekend.
Late, late af- Late afternoon by four o'clock, four-thirty, it's, it's dark.
Right.
So.
When we can see it.
So it's either a weekend-
And in the morning, and in the morning, if I, if I recall reading a bunch of letters and traveling in that direction, it can sort of be murderous, right, in Highland Street and Main Street and everything else. But, you know, let's, certainly I think it's better in the morning, and I would not throw out the weekend. I think we ought to add that in just as a possibility.
Okay, I agree.
And, and I would go for two dates, given that we could have snow out.
I'll actually, I'll, yeah, I'll actually have Heather throw out a couple.
Yeah.
Great.
Because I'm retired, I'm a little more flexible.
So I don't know if there's any more that the board would like to raise. I guess I would, just from my point of view, I'm, I'm, I'll say that I'm struggling a little bit, and I'd love to, at the next meeting, and get the views of the town staff and others about the simple fact that we have a recommendation from the planning board with three or four stated conditions, of which what we're hearing from the applicant is they're really only willing to accept one of those. So that's just a factor, and I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with how to deal with that myself, so I just wanna throw that out there. If there are other concerns that people have here, or thoughts that might be helpful to the applicant or the town staff, I'd love to get those on the table so that we don't get four weeks from now, or however long it is to the next meeting. And, you know, we're asking a question that would have been nice to have had that, that thing out there for somebody to consider.
The, the only- Just, this, this is going to those, those, this going to those planning board recommendations that, you know, the applicant might not wanna, might not wanna accept. It's the twenty-four width, twenty-four feet wide roadway is a, I don't know how that came in the plan. Is that a specific requirement for the, from the fire department? Can that, can that be reduced to twenty-two? I mean, and, you know, I know the fire department already said only one-sided parking. Twenty-two should be sufficient with one-sided parking, given the amount of vehicles traveling on a road, et cetera. So that would be, you know, something, you know, you might wanna look into.
You know, while we're on that, my recollection from my days on the planning board twenty-something years ago is that, is that when you have a single entrance, there's always worry about, about what happens if a tree falls over it, or all that kind of stuff. So are, is there a, is there an emergency entrance in this thing for people to get in there? I think I saw one, I thought I saw one, but I just wanted to make, I mean, not people, but fire people, firemen, firewomen.
There is no separate emergency access. Originally, when this project came through, the project went to the right dead-ended, went to the left dead-ended, did not connect. And the fire department did strongly object to that. The, the short entrance where it's, you know, only one way in, one way out, they, they were comfortable with that, but did want it to be a looped road, in case they had to go from one side or the other.
And they're comfortable, and, and we're gonna find out if they're comfortable with that at twenty-two feet, right?
Um, correct. I will ask them that.
Thank you.
Just a little closer to the mic.
Yeah, I'm curious, you know, they talked about the fact that they had to have a height variance because it is sloped, and it is really sloped. I'm just wondering how much of a variance is required for units that are constructed on, on the slope.
So I think that's part of what you're gonna provide us in your next analysis.
There's a table, and it depends, it also depends on what we ultimately end up doing with fill here, right? Or cut to a certain extent.
Oh, there you go.
I see a nod. I see at least one nod back there in the- Not, not that much.
So that's something-
I'm really interested, but not that, not right now.
So that is something that the applicant did submit, and it's, is on the board's website. There is a complete chart as far as the, the height, the grades, and what the variance is for each, for each unit.
Right.
So that information is available.
I guess it would just be use, I, it, maybe it's in there, but it'd just be useful to tie out the sort of- be useful to tie out the sort of origins, if, if the issue is it's a bunch of fill and something's going on top of it, or if it's something else that's, you know, but...
That ta, that table explicitly explains.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll refresh my memory when I look back at it again.
Anybody else?
I, I have one more question on parking. Are, are you gonna have parking lots or parking spaces on the, on the individual, uh, pro, properties? I'm just curious how much garage parking and how much open parking there might be.
So, um, again, there's, uh, another table that goes through and tells you which units have two-car garages or one-car garages, and then if it's a two-car garage, there's two spaces outside. If it's a one-car garage, there's also one space outside.
And then, and then there was, then that goes also to the fire department's notion about only having parking on one side of the street, right?
Correct, there is parking allowed only on one side of the street.
Anything else? Oh, my, okay, so, um, we are gonna continue this public, I'm gonna get a motion to continue this public hearing, yes?
So move.
Both for the purposes of doing a site visit and to come back, uh, on February thirteenth to look at other kinds of issues, um, including the, uh, report that you're gonna help us with on, uh, fill, cut fill, et cetera. Um, I've got a motion, I got a second, I'm sure.
Um, and so the motion needs to include, um, seven-twenty would be the time.
Seven-twenty, excuse me, seven-twenty, yes. After we figure out the striping and the mobile station.
Yes.
Just so you know that I've, just so you know that I still actually couldn't remember what happened. All right, so, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Um, I know you've been in hundreds of these meetings, it seems like, at this point, but at least you got one more coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do them.
Everyone get out.
So, uh, folks, folks who are here, if, we do have a few more items of business, including electing a new chair. So if you could move out as quickly as possible, to the extent that you don't wanna stay for that, that's great, so that we can hear ourselves.
Okay, what do we got?
Junction Village.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna tell us about Junction Village, right?
Well, I never got, I've never got the papers for this. I, I did it on lo, I did it on my iPad.
Yeah, no.
They're all like, we, it's been so many times.
I don't think I have a record.
Just do it, like Brexit.
We got lots, we have three things left.
We don't want it, but, just do it, correct.
You're, you're leaving?
We have three more.
You can't leave yet, we have two more things to do.
Oh, God.
Okay, the first one, I think, on this list is, uh, the Winthrop Street Junction Village Assisted Living Special Permit Extension, which I'm not sure I know what that exactly is, but you're gonna tell me, right? Nah, it doesn't, okay, whatever.
The planning board issued a comprehensive permit.
Well, the planning board issued a comprehensive permit, uh, for the Junction Village Assisted Living Facility. Comprehensive permits are good for three years, um, but, um, understanding the process to get funding through the state and different state agencies, um, for this project, uh, usually you get denied two times, and the third time's a charm, but it, ultimately, it takes three years to get your funding in order. So they're requesting an extension to the comprehensive permit.
For three years? Another two years, one year?
No, one year.
One year?
Yeah, it, yeah, sorry, the, uh, the, the agenda says special permit, but it's a comp permit, it's a, it was a forty-B application.
Yeah, it's a comprehensive special permit.
Okay, oh, yeah, comprehensive, I got it.
It's a comprehensive special permit, as in, was it a forty-B application?
Yeah, yes, so that's a comprehensive permit, um, which is issued as a special permit.
I certainly do.
All right, I move that we...
Recommendation, we approve it.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing you can do here, this is...
If your question is, is staff recommending that you approve it? Yes, by all means.
Fantastic. I, I'd like to move that we grant that extension for a year.
Okay, is there a second? Yep, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Now, the second one is very similar. I actually remember doing the Minuteman Arc Special Permit at one point for this, so is similar issue is funding, or is there some, okay?
Similar, similar issue. Um, well, they're not going through the state to get funding, um, they're, you know, a nonprofit, um, that has to secure funding in different manners, so...
Yes, and, and a very important aspect of the town, so I'm certainly...
Yes.
Favor that. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I move that we extend the Minuteman Arc Special Permit again for a year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, I'm gonna skip quickly. Have people read the twelve, twelve minutes?
I have, yes.
Yes.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Sure, I move that we approve the minutes of December twelfth.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, and, um, well, I don't know why it's in yellow, Black Birch PRD Lot Release Request, is that...
Um, it, it's in yellow because it wasn't part of the original posted agenda, so it's part of the revised posted agenda.
And how are you guys feeling about that?
Um, so both, um, the Concord Municipal Light Plant and the Engineering Division have reviews, reviewed the interim as-built plans and have no issues with the release of Lot Six and Lot Eight.
Motions?
Sure, I move that we, uh, release those lots, six and eight.
Second.
Subject, whatever conditions we're supposed to, no, just release, just release, all right.
Based on, based on information that we're all set, okay, the conditions have been met, in fact. All right, second, all those in favor? Aye. All right, now to the election of officers. My God.
Yeah, thanks.
So I think the two officers that we need are secretary and...
Chair.
And chair, chair and clerk, chair and something, chair and clerk. So I'm gonna entertain, uh, a nomination for chair, and if nobody else wants to make it, I'll make one.
You prepared to, uh, continue?
I'm not prepared to continue. I, 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 I think we need to have Elizabeth have a chance at this.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Unless she, unless she, unless she refuses.
Nah, I won't refuse.
You can make the nomination.
Okay, I'm gonna nominate Elizabeth to be the new chair of this body. I'm, um, it was really fun to get to do it a little longer while you were on leave, but, um, all good things have to come to an end, and this one can't happen soon enough. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Huh? There was second, there was plenty of seconds, yes, we, there's plenty of seconds. Are you willing to accept this, if we vote you in?
Yes, I will accept it.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, thank you very much.
I've heard such good things about this position.
Well, you've experienced them since I've been away from time to time. All right, uh, but Eli...
Oh, right.
Is Elizabeth now the chair, and there's a clerk?
Let's sit back and discuss for a while, then, no. So we need a clerk nom...
Yes.
I need to entertain a motion for, um, for a nomination for clerk.
Yes, what? Yes? I'm, I'm nominating Theo, yeah, yes.
Are you willing to accept that, if we, uh...
Sure.
All right, second?
Second for I.
All favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.